We'll call the November 4th, 2020, commission meeting to order. Mr. Thompson, would you like to do the pledge prayer and back to the day, please, sir?
Let's bow our heads together. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for a beautiful day here in Florida. We thank you, Lord, that you're watching over our nation as we wrestle with this election. May hearts still pull together for that which is the common good. And we ask you to bless our meeting here and give us wisdom as we make decisions on behalf of the people. We give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
November 2nd, 1947, Howard Hughes debuts the largest aircraft ever built at that time, the H4, otherwise known as the Spruce Goose. Hughes, a successful Hollywood movie producer at the time, created his own aircraft company in 1932 where he tested cutting-edge technology. In 1937, he broke the record for transcontinental flight time, and in 1938, he flew around the world in just three days. In 1941, the US government commissioned Hughes' company to build a large flying boat to carry men and materials over long distances as part of the World War II efforts. Industrialist Henry Kaiser originally came up with the concept for the H4 plan, but dropped out early, which left the project up to Hughes and his team. Due to wartime restrictions on meals, on metals, sorry, Hughes decided to build the plane out of wood that was laminated with plastic and covered with fabric. It earned its nickname Spruce Goose from the materials to make the plane birch and spruce coupled with its white-gray color. It cost over $23 million to make and was not completed until 1946, after the war had ended. The wooden plane had a wingspan longer than a football field and had eight giant propellers. It was designed to carry more than 700 men and their equipment to battle. Congress questioned whether the plane was functional, and as a result, Hughes conducted a test flight in Long Harbor, Long Beach Harbor, California, on November 2nd, 1947. He got the plane 70 feet in the air and flew for a mile before landing. Even with the successful test flight, there were questions whether the wooden plane would sustain long-distance trips. Hence, it never went into production. However, Hughes never gave up on the Spruce Goose. He kept the plane ready for production in a hangar from 1947 until his death in 1976 at a cost of $1 million per year. The Spruce Goose is now part of aviation history and can be seen at the Evergreen Aviation Museum in McMinnville, Oregon.
Approval of the minutes, I've got one change, Susan, for you. On page five, it says, "Mayor Nelson say that city obligation will be $2,500," said that the system cost range between $12,000 and $14,000. He called upon, I called upon Jeff Littlejohn of the St. John's Water Management. He is with Onsite, not with St. John's Water Management. I think somebody mentioned that he was with St. John's, but he's with Onsite. So, with those corrections, can I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Orange County Public Schools.
My name is Edmund Napier. I'm with the Scoville Architects, and I'm here this afternoon to give you guys a brief presentation on the new K8 that will be built here in the city of Apokka off of Site 90. And I'm going to go ahead and get you guys started here. So this is the general location of the site where the school will be built in the city of Apokka. This is in a large view. It's just off of Jason Dewelly Road here in the city. It is a greenfield site. This is the existing site conditions as they are from the existing aerial. So, this is what we have planned for the site, and I'll try to point a few items out for you. So, there will be one main entrance to the school, entrance and exit. The people will come in, parents, for the drop-off, they can queue through the parking lot, drop off at the front of the building and out through the same exit. Site amenities include a track, gymnasium, basketball courts, feature portables. We are going to maintain the tree line at the corner of the site here and plant a couple of extra trees to help minimize the impact to the existing community. Some of the numbers off to the side here, we have queuing for 243 vehicles. It's about, almost a mile-long worth of queuing, so we should not have any issues with any traffic backing up onto the street. And then, our bus loop will be entrance here a little bit further down on the site, and it's set up for 13 buses. The building consists of a three-story, a two-story, and a one-story portion, and I'm going to show you guys a couple renderings here of what that will look like when it is The three-story portion here, which has administration on the first floor, classrooms above, and then it has a two-story classroom wing in the front, and then a one-story classroom in the back. And then we have a view from the other corner of the site, and it's a little dark on the screen. I don't know if you guys have screens or you can see it, but that's sort of, well, that's exactly really what the elevations are going to look like. And if you guys have any questions or comments.
Any questions? Go ahead, go ahead.
Just a question on the gym. It said a one-story gym, but I'm assuming that's high enough for basketball, volleyball, internally, just lower seating.
Yeah, it's about 22 feet in Florida ceiling on the inside.
Okay. I know we talked to your team about eliminating the retention ponds for additional space. I know because it's a tight location, and so we were trying to give you some additional space, so we were just going to tie into the, into our stormwater. So, has something changed?
I'll bring my civil engineer up and he can answer that.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm Jay Kleema with Kleema Week Civil Engineers. We're the engineers for the project. Yeah, there was certainly some dialogue about potentially going in that direction. What we ended up doing is using some of the areas within the campus that were not necessarily usable anyway, to be able to put in dry retention. Those are all dry retention ponds. We do still have connection to the off-site system, once we've done what we need to, on-site.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Good. Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up, the police accreditation. I know that Chief's going to hold that off till the next commission meeting, give us a few more details about it. Also, the Jason Isbell concert is going to be because of increased cases. I think he's putting it off till January 9th, we think. We don't have a firm date on that. Next up is Jeff Weatherford talking about excess flooding across city.
Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Weatherford, Director of Public Services, for those in the audience. Want to talk a little bit about water fundamentals. The mayor approached me about drainage issues and such, and putting on a presentation for council. So, kind of just getting some basic understandings as far as aquifers and groundwater and such, that typically when we talk about an aquifer, we're talking about an area of water deep down below the soils. Here, the first Floridian aquifer, depending on where you're at, is 100, 300 feet deep in the ground. And nor above that, we have a confining layer that can be rock, can be clays, combination thereof, that keep that water separate from everything else. But above that, we'll also have what's called an unconfined aquifer, which is just water that's below the surface. Typically, in this area, the water table, which is where that saturated, well, where the saturated section of groundwater is at, the water table separates where there's the water versus the soils that don't have the water. Usually, that's somewhere between 6 and 15 feet deep. But groundwater tables can fluctuate. Now, this is a graphic I stole offline because why invent something new? And actually, their dry and wet seasons, as they show here, are different than ours, that they're showing the winter water table when things are wet and the summer water table when it's dry. So, we pretend winter says summer and summer says winter will be good. But basically, what it means is that during the winter months here, the water may be a little bit lower. During the summer, when it's wetter, that water table comes up. And here, in this case, right here, they're showing a river. And that river, because of the fluctuations in the water table, may exist, in our case would be during the winter, or during the summer, and, ooh, what the heck happened there? Apparently, if you push on that too long, it goes crazy. That, basically during the summer, the river would be there, and then during the winter, that water table drops and it would go away. Other things about groundwater. That's the area in the unconfined above that we showed were just below the surface. We can have a high water table. Here in Florida, overall, we do have high water tables. You go into other parts of the country, that water table may be 20, 30, 40, 50 feet below the ground for that saturated area. Here, we talked about 6 to 15 feet. It can actually be higher than that. And when you see it too high, what you'll start seeing is soggy-ness, little puddles in the yards, that type of thing, that may be there for weeks, days, months, maybe there for a while. They can become elevated when we get more water than we can drain off quickly. So, that's kind of what's been happening to us. It can be unusually high amounts of rainfall. And as y'all know, August and September, it started raining August 1st and didn't stop until about September 30th, it seemed like. Okay, rainfall variations. This is actually a 10-year rainfall map, average rainfall per year, with the yellowish and lighter green being less water, down into the purple and bluish colors which are heavier. And that, to give you kind of a feel for it, it's basically going from about 45 inches up to 55 or more inches per rain, rain per year. And you can see here, kind of in the heart of Apokka, we're kind of in that middle range, kind of right around 50 inches a year, is what we've been having over the last 10 years. But you can also see by all those little squares, and those are about one-mile squares, it can be different right next to each other. We've all had the experience where we're standing on one side of the street and watching it rain on the other, and it hasn't gotten to us yet. Similar type of phenomenon. Okay? Other things to remember is that we've also got floodplains, and the mayor wanted to talk a little bit about the floodplains. Now, obviously, we see Lake Apokka, but all these other blue areas, those are larger, and actually, Lake Apokka itself is larger than what the actual lake boundary is, and those are the floodplains. Everything shown there in blue is shown as a 100-year floodplain. And so, we've got that to worry about, too, that is, we get those heavier rains, we can actually spread out. And when we start talking about the 100-year floodplain, I'm going to get technical here. Please feel free to take a nap. 100-year event is not really true, 100-year event. It really means that any given day that we have rain in a watershed, that we have a 1% chance of having that level of event. So theoretically, we can have a 1% storm on Monday here around City Hall, and then on Tuesday, we can have one, and on Wednesday, we can have one. The chances are less, but it's not that, oh, it's only something you're going to get every 100 years. The other thing is when we talk about those 100-year events or those 1% storms, they're varied on time, and that's what this table shows, is that it starts with about a five-minute period and it goes to 60 days. So, that we can have, that obviously, if we have a five-minute event, which means in this case, it's about, oh, I think it's about three inches in a five-minute period, that is that 1% storm. Whereas, over that 60-day period, we're talking more in the, kind of the 26, 27 inches of rain over that period of time. So, the saturation levels go up as the time goes on, and that's kind of what we've experienced, and we'll get into that a little bit more here in the next slides. That, one of the shortfalls we've got is we don't have really good information for what's happening in Apokka. That's something the public service is looking to change. We've ordered one weather station, we're going to try it out, and we're probably going to deploy about four more around the city, so we know what the rain is. That right now, currently, the National Weather Service uses the two airports, Orlando International and Orlando Sanford, and that we all know that those are not, those are far enough away that it doesn't necessarily reflect our rain here. But what this chart shows is on the far left, that 100% value, that's the average rainfall for the month of August in this area, and that's about seven and a half inches. The next bar graphed here, where we're at just slightly under 100%, is the rainfall that was experienced for August at Orlando International Airport. It was like 7.43 inches, so pretty much normal. The next bar is Orlando Sanford. Whoop, you know what? I'm on the wrong slide. Let's go to the slide, and then we'll come back to this one. Oh yeah, these are the August rainfall data. So this was the 7.5 normal. This is Orlando International at 98.5% or so, at 7.43. Orlando Sanford here, they were slightly less than seven inches of rain. We got some data from a gauge that Orange County operates out by Lake Apokka, and they had 8.08 inches in the month of August. So that's slightly more than normal. But where I said we don't have a lot of data from inside the city, we were able to find some Doppler estimates from National Weather Service, and this number right here is from the area that encompasses State Route 436 at Piedmont-Wakewa, basically by the Hobby Lobby. And at that location, we estimate, based on that Doppler data, we had almost 15 inches of rain for the month of August. So that's twice as much as we would normally have. Okay? Now, let me go back a slide where I was supposed to be. This right here, this is the average annual rainfall that the National Weather Service records for the area, and the average for Apokka is 52.73 inches per year. Now, again, we talked about we don't have a lot of good data for ourselves. We got most of this data from Altamont Springs at their Keller Road wastewater treatment plant. This number here is basically May through October 20th of this year. And you'll notice that during that period of time, we are at about 88% of our annual rainfall for that six-month period. The smaller number was last year. This would be 2018 for the same period. This outlier here was back during 2017, and that's Hurricane Irma's impact on the area. Okay? And then the year before that would be 2016, and the interesting thing about this is that this was the year Hurricane Maria came through. And you'll notice that this year, without a hurricane, we have exceeded what we had in the year with Maria. So that kind of gives you some historical data that where, if you figure this might have been a little bit more normal, we're considerably higher, and that we're really kind of in that six-month period, we're getting almost 90% of our annual rainfall that we would normally expect to get. This last one is some data that we obtained from a developer down on the south side of town here, basically at Silver Oaks, and between June and the middle of September, which is about a four-month period, they actually recorded about 41 inches of rain or about 78%. So again, you see those fluctuations and how they happen from year to year and everything, and you can see that this year appears to be a little bit heavier. We looked at this slide with about 15 inches at, during August. This one is August and September annual rainfall, which is about, oh, eh, about, oh, whoa, wait, this is the average, so that's about 45 inches, 55 inches there is what we normally have. That here, in just the two months, you see, no, that's the, that is the average annual, so that's 55 inches, that just in the two-month here, period here, we have experienced almost half of our rainfall, our average rainfall for the year. That normally, in August and September, we get about a quarter of our annual rainfall in those two months. We're at about double in those two months what we normally see. Okay, we're going to look at some problem areas, and Lake Hammer is the first one we're going to look at here, over by Sheeler Oaks, that I put this slide up again, which we already saw, because I want to go back to something that we didn't pay a lot of attention to before. Here, we've got the groundwater, the saturated zone with the groundwater, and then the unsaturated, and the water table is that dividing line. You'll notice that the surface water in this lake here is the same as the water table. That becomes important, because that's how, unless you've got a spring-fed lake, which again, you're still dealing with the water table issues, basically, a lake will fill to the level of the water table surrounding it. So this is Lake Hammer. This was taken, oh, about a week, week and a half ago. That's about a four-foot-high fence. Normally, that fence ends about a foot or two from the water line. So what that tells us is that right now, Lake Hammer is probably four to five feet above its normal water level. Okay? And that has to do with that rise in the water table. And incidentally, we started, because of the fact we were aware of some issues with floodplain and such over in this area, we started actually pumping this lake and sending it over to a detention facility over on Cleveland back in June. And we estimate that between then and now, we've moved better than 5 million gallons of water out of that lake, and we're still four to five feet above normal. The other thing is we talked about those floodplains and the understanding of the importance of floodplains. Natural bodies of water have floodplains, and Lake Hammer's no different. You see Lake Hammer there, and then you can see these floodplains and how far they extend. And that's also indicative of where that water table has a potential to be higher, that I think the last really heavy storm we had was back at the end of September, I want to say September 29th, could be wrong on the date. We've had some other rains since then that was pretty good, but that was the really big one back at the end of September. We received a call from a gentleman right about there, and what he had was, he called us about a water line break, because he had water bubbling up in his yard. We went out there, it wasn't a water line, no water line in the area, it's just literally that that water table is so high in his yard that it was starting to bubble out. So, when we look at Lake Hammer, we've got a very, very high water table through here, and that these people here are susceptible to actually starting to have problems in their yards and such. Plus then, if we have a bigger event, that it's likely that they're more susceptible to potentially actually having water from the lake enter their homes, which we're trying to avoid. Some of y'all have talked to a lady that lives over here, and where the star is at is actually where her house is at. She lives within the floodplain. Worse yet, when we went out there and we actually did some surveying, we found that at the front of her garage, her house, her floor elevation there is actually lower than all of these houses over here. So that's why when it rains and we start getting some of that back up, because there's no way for water to get into the lake, that we start running into issues with it coming up her driveway first, that she's actually got the low property there in that floodplain. Border Lake, right out on the edge of the town with Seminole County. I mean, you've got Border Lake here, but we've really got three areas here we want to take a quick look at. Border Lake, Lake Cortez, which is actually an unincorporated Orange County, and then right about there, we've got the detention pond for the Hobby Lobby Shopping Center. And again, this is the area where we kind of looked and we feel like we've had about 27, 28 inches of rain during the two-month period. And so, very, very heavy over there, and so we have those impacts that happen. Again, we can look here at the floodplains. Now, Hobby Lobby's lake is not a natural lake, so it doesn't show with the Federal Emergency Management Association that's having one. But Border Lake is generally confined, generally in the area of the immediate area of the lake, but you can hear, you can see here, Lake Cortez extends out quite a bit. There's also a detention pond over here in front of what are the Milan Apartments right here, that is interconnected with Border Lake, and so there are some issues there. Now, typically, water tends to drain from the north here towards the south in this area. But if you're full, there's not a lot of places for the water to go, so it impacts Lake Cortez, because there's nowhere for it to go. We've heard some complaints, well, gee, the city needs to stop pumping water into Lake, from Border Lake into Lake Cortez. We're not pumping any water that way. That we've not pumped any, a single droplet of water from Border Lake into Lake Cortez. We have actually intercepted water that was draining to Lake Cortez up here and pumped it further to the south down into some Harris County, or some Orange County lakes. But we're not sending anything up towards, towards Lake Cortez. The next few slides, I've got some photos that are taken in some different areas, like here's spot one on 436 looking at Border Lake. Spot two is again, right over there by that detention pond for Milan. Three is over on the borders of Lake Cortez, and again, you'll be able to see the high water table there. Number four is standing out here on the sidewalk in front of the pond at Hobby Lobby, and you'll be able to see how full it still is. And then finally, the fifth one is a photo the mayor sent me back here on this roadway going back by Century Link, that shows the high water table up there where it's actually running across the roadway down towards Border Lake. So again, problem area is Border Lake, and we'll see where number three is at. Okay, it's a little dark up here, but basically, this is the sidewalk, and the water is literally inches below that curb line today, that on your screens, it may show up a little bit better. But that's how high Border Lake is. It's almost, it's, you know, that it's probably one really good storm from starting to have a potential impact on 436. Second one was across the street. Again, it's hard to see on, up here, hopefully it's better on your screens, but you see the water pounding here. And again, that has to do with that saturation level in the soils. Spot number three was taken over by Lake Cortez, and you see this little storage shed is actually in the water today. It's not normally, in a normal year, in the water, but that's how high up the lake has crept. This photo is taken on Piedmont-Wakewa on the, during the, right, I guess, right after the August 7th storm that we had, and that's the view looking out the car window over towards, this is actually the lake in front of Hobby Lobby, and it's extended into the roadway here. This is what it looks like standing out on the sidewalk in front of Hobby Lobby today. You can see how it's just a few, you know, maybe two, three feet from that sidewalk. The next good storm we have, again, this will end in, it seems like recently, just about every time every time we get a good rainstorm, this fills up and kind of ends up spilling over into the roadway. And again, high water tables and where they're at, the parking lots there at Hobby Lobby and those places, Beals and such, are flooding, because they tie directly into this pond. And so there's just nowhere for the water to go. And this is the picture I was telling you, where the mayor took a picture of the water actually seeping out of the ground, out of the soils, and running across the road, and running downhill towards Border Lake. Again, it's those levels of saturation in the soils that are just coming across. Next area is Wakawo Oaks, kind of southwest of where the Hobby Lobby is, the other side of the roadway. That, this is the detention pond right here for the subdivision, and right about where that one is at, there's actually a catch basin that collects the water from the roadway at the low point there, and pushes it off into that pond. This picture is taken a couple of days ago. That, you see the water pounding here, the catch basin's right about there, there's no place for that water to go, because that pond is completely filled. Matter of fact, right about there, if you look, and it's probably, again, easier to see on y'all's screens, there's a little disturbance out there. That's their fountain. The fountain's actually underwater, that's how high that lake is, that it's not actually spurting out, it's still operating, but it's operating below the surface of the water. So, and this is a perfect example of, they're just, where do we put the water? There's no place for it to go. And that water table's so high, that this lake has been like this, at least, since the end of September. So more than a month, this water has been standing on the road like this. It may have changed over with some of the rainstorms, but it's pretty much been like this since the end of September. That water table in that lake is not coming down, and the water, it's not draining, or what is draining, we're just replacing at the same rate it's draining. And this is actually a picture of one night, right during the rain. See where it's creeping up the driveways, and then kind of flooding, covering the whole Country Win, the other side of Piedmont-Wakawo, again, this is an interesting one, because it has, again, to do with that water table, and where that water table's at, and it'll give you a really good idea, that the natural water flow is from down this corner going up this way towards some of those lakes, like, let's see, I think it's Lake Piedmont, and Lake Blue are up that way. And that's where the water's trying to get to, from here to here. First photo I'm going to show you is taken from Wheeler Road, which is actually out in the county. And it's going to look this way, and we're going to see this house at thirteen sixty-nine, Country Win, and what you're going to see is how much lower it is than that road. And then we're going to look at some problems we're having here at thirteen sixty-one, Country Glen, down from the street level at number two. So, here we are, we're out here on Wheeler, and when you look here, you see that this fence line, which is about a five-foot fence, is almost even with the, basically, the eaves of their roof. So that means that this house is probably four to five feet lower than where someone would be standing on the roadway here. Now then, we're going to go down and stand in the cul-de-sac and look back. This is that thirteen sixty-nine, Country Win, that we were looking at, that's about four to five feet lower than where we were standing on Wheeler. You'll notice this right here, that's the retaining wall. This house at thirteen sixty-one is about four feet lower than the house here, that's four to five feet lower than the road up there. And so what you'll see here, he's actually done some work, putting some drainage in his yard and everything, but you see where the water path is just coming out, just, this isn't like it's raining or anything. You can go out there today, and chances are, you'll see that where he's got a pipe that he's put underground, there'll be trickling water today probably. Because the water table's so high, that if you go into his backyard, right in this area, you can actually see it coming out of the ground. And what's happened is, is that with all this rain we've had, essentially, and this has been going on since the year with Irma. He says, every year since Irma, come about June, it starts June, or late June, early July, it starts bubbling out of the ground, and this goes on until winter time. Essentially, what he's got is, he's got a seasonal spring. And there's not a good solution for this. He can look at putting some huge storage boxes in there to try and get it out more efficiently, but it's just that the water table during the summer is above the level of the soil here. Apopka Woods, we've heard some conversations here in this chamber about Apopka Woods, and where people are upset about what's going to happen, what's happening there. This is the subdivision. This is view number one, which is looking here and looking this way, and you see how much higher that fence is there. View number two is looking that way, again, you can see how much higher those fences are than the properties. Per the plans that were submitted to the city, and we're assuming that it was built exactly to those plans, they actually, at the back of the subdivision, cut about ten feet of soil in order to level everything out going up towards McCormick Road to the south, so they could have a flat subdivision to build in. One of the issues is, is that when you step back from looking at this aerial, and look at all the neighbors. Okay, that's the aerial view at a bigger scale. This is Apopka Woods. This is the Orange County Water Reclamation Facility. I'm not sure exactly when they put this in, but what I can tell is, looking at the assessor's photos, going back to two thousand and one, this facility is there in two thousand and one, the subdivision was built in two thousand and fifteen. So, the Water Reclamation Facility has been there for fourteen years, at least, before they started this subdivision. What you see here, all of these little snake-looking devices, and there's one here that's kind of covered up by some foliage and stuff, but these series of little snakes are what are called ribs, rapid infiltration basins. Basically, this is where the county takes extra surplus reclaimed water, dumps it into the ground to recharge the aquifer. Now, in a perfect world, water would go straight down. Realistically, it doesn't. It kind of flows out, it'll eventually make its way down. But what happens is, that this facility, that's been there for some time, artificially raises the water table, particularly during the summer months, when it's rainy, and they're not selling quite as much reclaimed water. It artificially raises that water table in that area. Now, they chose this area because it actually hasn't had originally a deeper water table, and that generally, we want to start looking at, you know, ten to fifteen feet in the deep, at least, for the water table, before we start looking at ribs. But then, we cut the subdivision down. And so what's happening is, you literally have water seeping out of the ground again. That where we've heard from the neighbors on the streets, what you can see here is kind of that joint line between the asphalt and the concrete, see some grass growing? We get water actually bubbling up through there. We have some other areas, but you can also, like here, you can see where it's actually running off the side of the, this area here, running off, flooding that area, and rolling off over the top of the curb into the street to be collected by the drainage system. Again, it's that artificially high water table. Theoretically, we can fix this roadway, so that we don't have it seeping up between the seams here, and so that the pavement's not damaged by the water and such. What we can't do is make the underlying problem with what's happening there with the soils go away. That even if we fix this, where it's seeping out here, we can't fix this where it overtops. And that's kind of, again, it's, where do you put the water when it's coming out of the ground like that? That becomes the challenge. So, these are kind of the problem areas that we've identified. We've had a lot of rain. Hopefully, we can go back to a normal year next year, and maybe that'll help dry us out some. But right now, the water table is just so, so high, we just don't have any place to put the water. Like I said, we pulled five million gallons off of Lake Hammer, and I'd venture to say that overall, we really haven't made much of a difference there. That, and the question becomes, even if we start pulling more and more of this water out of the ground, we've got to put it someplace. Where do we put it? That at the Public Services Facility, where we've got the wastewater treatment plant. We run into the same problem that Orange County gets with extra, excess reclaimed water during this time of year and everything. We don't have ribs, we have spray fields. We've used our spray fields so much this year, we're starting to have similar problems to what they're having. We're actually having pondings starting to occur in our spray fields, and we've had to shut the spray fields off to allow that some time to percolate down. Because again, we just have so much water, and we have no place to put it. So, there are some solutions for some things, there are some places where we ought to be looking for solutions. There are others where it's natural phenomena, and that we may not be able to do a whole lot. One of the things we've talked about that's actually in our CIP is a permanent pump station for Lake Hammer. That it would basically do what we've been doing. Five million gallons. I'm not sure that if we hadn't pulled that five million gallons out, that that water level still wouldn't be just about that same place. So it becomes, what, you know, the issue we've got, the challenge we've got, is to look at where we can make a difference and where we can't, and to kind of understand exactly what all's happening here today with the amount of water we've had. And with that, now that I've run your afternoon, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I guess on the, outside of the Lake Cortez and like border situation, so all the ones that are in residential communities as it stands right now, what is our liability from a city's standpoint, if any?
That really, our legal liability is none. That a lot of these, such as like up in the Sheila Oaks area, they actually are within the floodplain, and that, you know, there's floodplain insurance they can have, there are various other aspects, but living within the floodplain, that's something we're not going to be able to change. So that's, and again, Michael's better to address that, but I'd say, from the legal standpoint, probably not a lot. From the moral standpoint of, we're trying to help our community, and trying to help our citizens, that changes things. But we've also got to understand what we can and can't do. And Michael, legal standpoint? I only play a lawyer.
No, I mean, without, I don't want to step into a legal opinion here at this point, but I mean, it's going to really rest on our obligations and what is possible, yeah, it's, I mean, I don't want to delve in hypotheticals in these areas, so I would be very careful.
Yeah, well, I guess what the point that I was making is, it's not necessarily our responsibility to go out and fix a seasonal spring on someone's private property. But at the same time, what you're saying is that we can be good partners and be very consultive with our residents to give them ideas about how to resolve or rectify the situation.
And that's exactly what we're trying to do, that in the case of the gentleman with the, we'll call it a seasonal spring, we've had several conversations, we're going to get back with him with some ideas for some things that may minimize it. We're not necessarily obligated to fix it, but we're also considering some other things, such as, we've got our own underdrain through that area. Typically, we would not allow someone else to tie into that underdrain. He's got a unique situation. We're looking at whether or not maybe just having that pour straight into our underdrain might be better, so we're willing to work with him. Sheila Oaks area, again, we talked about Lake Hammer, where it's at with the water table, we've talked about the floodplain issues and such. We've actually, we're getting a consultant to come out and kind of take a look at the overall situation out there, and see what kind of things we can do to try and help. So, and again, with Apopka Woods, we're working with the developer, we'll continue working to try and find solutions, or trying to find ways to minimize things, but it's, sometimes Mother Nature has got a different idea.
Mr. Smith?
I guess I was listening when you said that in some areas, the developer cut the ground down in order to make a flat surface in order to build homes. During the process of approving developments, if we know that there's a high water table, is there a possibility that we would deny the opportunity for him to cut the ground down, so it can make him a level playing field that will create this problem we're talking about?
That, and typically, a developer, and Apopka Woods, I'll get into that specifically, what I think may, well, maybe I might, I'll have to talk a little bit with Michael, but that typically, a developer, if they recognize that the water table's high, they're not going to cut that low. I think that there are a series of factors that may have impacted what happened out there, that when they presented their work to us, it didn't show that they were going to be cutting into the water table. No one expected for this to happen. Why it happened, I don't know whether it's just we've had a lot of rain, or what may, when the, you know, a lot of different conditions, I'm not going to get into that, but ordinarily, we would not approve a set of plans where we knew that essentially, we're going to have these natural springs coming up in everybody's yards. That we would sit there, when we look at the engineering documents and such, we would say, hey, look at this. But, we don't go out there and conduct independent studies to determine whether, we take the information they provide us, and we review it and make sure it's done properly, but we, neither we nor any other city goes out and actually independently tests everything to make sure that those studies are right. We rely on, you know, basically, their professional licenses and that type of thing, to sit here when they're certifying, saying that this is, that the data they collected is accurate.
And we don't allow anybody to build within the hundred-year floodplain. Now, I think what's happened in Sheila Oaks is they remapped it, and so...
Well, actually, it's probably even more than that. What most people don't realize is that floodplain maps in a lot of areas of the country didn't exist until the early nineteen nineties. That it's very, very likely that, and Sheila Oaks may or may not be one of them, I think it was actually built back in the eighties, if I remember correctly, but it may not have, there may not have been a floodplain map when they designed and built that subdivision. So, now, today, if you sit here and you show where the floodplain's at, we don't allow that construction, or we require them to get the finished floor out of that. But back then, and in a lot of other areas, it just didn't exist.
But couldn't we also have the reverse effect, when we allow developers to bring in tons of soil and billow area up, that will cause a ripple effect on another subdivision that may have already been existed?
And that's why we don't let them necessarily just bring in and fill a lot of area, that it's got to be a balance, there's, that, Mr. Hick can probably tell you more exactly on what we may allow on fill as far as amounts, but you're right, we don't want people coming in and like, filling in a depression, and mounding it up and then building on top of that, because that water that was going there is going to go someplace else, and that has to be accounted for.
All right.
Commissioner?
Yeah, that touches on my question, is there a standard level above the water table that they're allowed to, and does that need to be changed, now that we're seeing this? Or is this just a fluke here?
I will find out for you. That, I don't know that we actually have a standard...
I think it's one foot above the hundred-year floodplain.
Well, it's above the floodplain, but above the water table, I don't know, we'll find out for you on that, and I'll let you know, that a lot of it depends on the types of soils and that type of thing, that, you know, you could have a clay leveled, clay layer that is holding water down, and that would be fine as long as you're above that, but if you basically impact that clay level, layer, take a little bit too much off, or penetrate it, now then all of a sudden, you can have a problem. So there are a lot of different things that go into that, and I'll find out the answer, but I don't know.
And is that a state-level standard? Is that something that we can have our own standard that's a little safer for future development?
Again, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the state-level standard. I suspect the state does not have one, and I don't know, that even if they do, I don't believe there's anything that would keep us from having something that exceeded theirs. We couldn't, like, if they said one foot, we couldn't go to six inches, but there would be no reason why we couldn't have eighteen inches.
I'd like to look into that.
That's fair, not state. That's federal, not state. Yeah, yeah. I just want to kind of give you a couple of updates on that. You know, we, you know, Border Lake is probably the one, the biggest, you know, area of concern, and it's all the lakes in that area. And we've, I've had probably four meetings now with Orange County, Seminole County, and DOT as to a solution. One of the things we're talking about, and it has its own share of problems, and that's putting in a drainage well, which, a drainage well is a, basically, as I call it, a straw that goes from groundwater all the way down the aquifer, which will get rid of the water, the question is, what water are you getting rid of? And so, the balance between, okay, you know, flooding versus water quality, you're always balancing that, you know, that relationship there. So, you know, we're continuing to work with our partners, and, you know, one of the things we're trying to get together here... we're trying to get together here, and try to put together a proposal to the state legislature to try to help us, that, you know, it's, yes, we're a big part of the problem if there's, as far as that area, but we need help from Orange County, we need help from Seminole County, and we need help from DOT to solve that problem, that issue. So, I just, I thought it was something everybody would, you know, need to, you know, to hear. If you get a chance, I can tell you where you can go see some of the water just coming right out of the ground without going into a neighborhood. If you'll go where the neighborhood market, Walmart is, on 436, take that traffic light, just past it, and go to the, it's the, well, now, it used to be CenturyLink, it's now Lumen. Take a right, which goes back into their parking lot, and then you'll look up to the left, and you'll see water coming right out of the, out of the neighborhood above Lumen's parking lot, coming down, heading into Border Lake. So, it'll give you a feel for what's happening. So, I just thought, you know, everybody would like to hear, you know, kind of what we're dealing with, facing, and, you know, we're trying to work where we can, and come up with solutions, and understand, you know, like a drainage well's about a half a million dollar, you know, fix. So, you know, it's not something we can, you know, pull out of our back pocket to...
But Mayor, we need to be careful about the drainage well, and, you know, we had an ag advisory board meeting this morning, and that was one of the things that was on our agenda, is that these wells is contaminated in aquifer.
Right.
And so, we've got to be careful as to what water we drain off, and put it into the aquifer, because we deplete the water quality.
Absolutely. One of the other ideas we're trying to, you know, to take a look at is, we have the reclaimed water pipe that comes from Utilities, Inc., and Altamont Springs to our plant at Cleveland, is if we could hook into that line and take water out to our plant. Problem is, we don't have anywhere to put it, we get it out there, you know, when it's raining. So, it's, yeah, there aren't any real good solutions. I mean, we're, you know, Jeff and his team are, you know, are looking at anything creatively. We'd love to, you know, to find another place where we could put a rapid infiltration basin, not at our plant, but somewhere that would, you know, get to the, to go through the ground and then get to the water table versus what we have today. But, it's a challenge, and I know we'll kind of incrementally make some adjustments and changes that should help us with that.
And I just want to mention, Mayor, the residents there at Micah Gladon and just past Bradshaw, they now have waterfront property, well, more than waterfront, in some cases in the homes, where the water table has increased, and I've stopped a couple of times, and they said, you know, in 50 years, the water table's never been that high. And so, there's some health issues that's going to result from that as well, standing water that long in that particular situation, so. But, that's part county and part city, so we don't know how this is going to work out either.
Right. Yes. Okay. Thank, any other questions for Jeff? All right. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, got a couple of proclamations. The first one is the Week of the Family. I want to go ahead and read that for everybody. "Whereas the family is the foundation of the city of Apopka, it is the family that instills pride and a sense of community in our city; and whereas Apopka is blessed with a multitude of families, an essential part of its culture, cultural, social, and spiritual fabric; and whereas strong families are at the center of strong communities, and we should take time to honor the importance of families and recognize the special connections that support and strengthen them throughout the year; and whereas during the celebration of the family, we will also remember and pray for the families of our men and women serving in the military; and whereas by strengthening the family unit, our communities, cities, and nation will be stronger for future generations. Now therefore, I Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, by virtue of the authority invested in me by the City of Apopka, do I here proclaim November 7th, 2020 through November 14th as Week of the Family." The next one is Mobility Week. Read that one as well. "Whereas Mobility Week is a cooperative effort by the Florida Department of Transportation and its partner agencies to promote awareness of safe multimodal transportation choices; and whereas Mobility Week is an ideal time for counties, cities, and transportation agencies to highlight transportation achievements, roll out new initiatives, and/or implement new policies; and whereas Mobility Week is also an opportunity for individuals to explore the various transportation choices available to them, and think about how multimodal transportation reduces traffic congestion, benefits the environment, and improves community health; and whereas Mobility Week is consistent with the City of Apopka's key priorities of promoting pedestrian safety and alternative modes of transportation; and whereas the City of Apopka supports Mobility Week by promoting safe multimodal transportation options. Now therefore, I Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, here do proclaim the week of October 30th through November 6th, 2020, as Mobility Week here in the City of Apopka." Okay. With that, Edward, any...
There are no changes to the agenda, Mayor.
Okay. Susan, public comment?
We have Cory Clark.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate the time. I'm Cory Clark, resident at 625 Mount Sterling Avenue. Just wanted to get up here, just, I don't know whether to complain or compliment, maybe a little of both. We've recently started, you know, feeling the effects of the Hammrich development right next to Rock Springs Ridge. A lot of heavy equipment, trees being taken down, those types of things, which is certainly understandable. But, biggest concern is, a little more than a year ago, when we were here negotiating with the city and the developer, to obviously not allow access to Mount Sterling, but also to leave a buffer that's currently there between Rock Springs Ridge and the current development. And here we are, a little bit later, it's getting underway, and we're just now finding out that there is a planned sewer connection to Rock Springs Ridge, which is going to pretty much take out the remaining buffer of the trees that are right in my backyard, my neighbors' backyards. So, certainly appreciate a couple of you folks reaching out to us. City's been in communication with us a little bit since this was brought to our attention. Just really not sure how we're here in the first place. When we negotiated this agreement, I know it was pretty emotional. Folks were really concerned about a lot of construction traffic, and just ingress and egress out of the new neighborhood coming off Mount Sterling and running through Rock Springs Ridge. So, according to the staff, it was then and there that we had decided that nothing would be connected at Mount Sterling, and we just were never informed that if sewer couldn't be connected there, it had to be connected at Mount Gaelic. I think had we known that information, we might have reconsidered the two options to see which had the least impact on our neighborhood. And yet, that decision was made, and I don't think any of us would be here today if I hadn't just had a conversation with a surveyor out in my backyard, because we didn't know anything about it. So, I appreciate it again, Commissioner Becker, Commissioner Bankson reaching out to us, and I don't know what can be done about it at this point, but just the communication, you know, in this day and age, how easy it is to communicate with folks, I just feel like it's really lacking, and just super concerned of, you know, we were told if this can't be moved to Mount Sterling, back to Mount Sterling, at the very least, we would be alerted as to when the developer would be taking the trees down, heavy equipment right on our property line, those types of things. I've got three kids at home homeschooling, and, you know, we're still under the impression today that that's being, still considered an option. Nothing else is going to be taken out of the buffer at this point, and yet, they were taking trees down this morning, until we contacted the, you know, the city to please try and do something about it. So, not sure where we're at, but would certainly appreciate any communication you have, because I just know it's...
Jim, you want to come forward and kind of address that for Cory?
Yeah, Cory and his neighbors have reached out to us, and thank goodness. I had talked with Jeff Summitt, who's the engineer for the project. This is actually last week, and we had a, basically, an agreement that nothing was else, and nothing else was supposed to be removed until we got this issue with where it's going to go, and, you know, the sewer line, that is, and the impact on the neighborhood, and the impact on the buffer area. When we got the email this morning, that they were actually doing, going out there, and they did have, they weren't just surgically taking out certain trees, they were out there, and the video was sent to us with a claw truck pulling a tree out, and that was just ludicrous on, you know, my feeling on that one. So, I did call Jeff. He did get in touch with the developer, and the developer stopped the work. And I told him, until anything else is given, the go-ahead, they cannot take any more trees, and they can't do any other work in that area. I have requested that Jeff look into putting the water lines, or the sewer lines, coming off of the sewer at the end of Mount Sterling, and I also did a little bit of research in regards to the development agreement and the master plan in terms of what can and cannot be done off of Mount Sterling, and what should or should not be done. Basically, the, there's three different sections in the developer's agreement that were considered negotiated concessions by the developer. One is vehicular connection, there should be no vehicular connection off of Mount Sterling. The other one is landscaping, for the landscaping buffer. That, in the buffer on the eastern side of the Hammrich or the Rock Springs Preserve, west side of Rock Springs, originally was only going to be 25 feet, and they did extend that to 100 feet. However, it is not supposed to be a utility easement, and my feeling is that because they put the, they started putting the sewer in at that northern location, they're considering it a utility easement, and I don't think it should be. So, I reached out to them to look at that again, and talking with Jeff earlier this morning, one of the things that he mentioned is they're looking into doing a direct bore from Gaelic Court underneath the, underneath the retention pond directly to their street versus going into that 100-foot buffer. So, that's one potential option. The other one is, still, my feeling is that they should go to the end of Mount Sterling Road, which is actually, the manhole that's there is actually just south of the driveway of the last house on the eastern side of Mount Sterling. So, it wouldn't affect anybody in terms of going to that location. It's just the engineering at this point in time to be able to do that type of a connection and rerouting the sewer lines. The other part that I mentioned is, under the development agreement, it says, under G, it says "Utilities Connection Points." Developer agrees that utility connection points necessary for the development of the project shall be, as more particularly described in Exhibit B, which was just the base site plan. It didn't even have the utility actually on that plan. Attached to and incorporated into the amended agreement, to which the city hereby agrees and accepts any such utility connection, utilities connection points along Mount Sterling Avenue side of the project is sufficient for the approved of the, and approved for the property. That's basically saying, put the utility there, not off a Gaelic Court. So, and everybody, they ever signed off on this one. The other part, under the master plan notes, there's, when you enlarge this, it's very tiny print, so I had to go to the original draft, but it says, "All construction access to the site will be from Pittman Road." So, that gets rid of any access issues coming off of Mount Sterling. And then it says, "No access to this site for construction shall be allowed on Mount Sterling, consistent with the developer's agreement." So, if you go back to the developer's agreement, it says, "Put the utilities there." So, that's two, that actually complements where the utility should have gone. And then the last one that came under the master plan is, "Due to the applicant's agreement to not connect to Mount Sterling Avenue and approve Pittman Road, those additional costs," and then it talks about developing Pittman Road. But, again, it just, it takes everything away from the main access off of Mount Sterling Road, you can't do, except it does say the utilities. So, I don't know where it ended up, where the utilities got approved to go to that northern location, and as I mentioned earlier, if they were going to do that, they would need to do it surgically so that you preserve the trees that are there, and that's what has not occurred. The trees have been taken down. Staff did go out there a couple of different times last week, and the beginning of this week, to see what was occurring, and we did get an email asking about the, Cory, I don't know if it came from you or Hank, but asking, there were some taped-off trees, and we didn't know about that. Jeff Summitt didn't know about that, so he was going to be going out there yesterday, didn't get a chance to, and then, of course, we got the email this morning regarding the work that's being done that really wasn't approved to be done. So, at this stage, we're waiting for Jeff and the developer to give us some alternatives, rather than taking down any more existing trees that are out there.
I was pretty angry when I heard about it, quite honestly, because that was a contentious issue, and we're trying to fight to work with the citizens, and again, it just creates that atmosphere. See, the city's really in the back pocket of the builders, and that's just not true. That was a very specific thing. I remember us, I know myself, about the trees, you know, we worked through that challenge on sandpaper, trying to keep those, you know, with the developer there. And so, there needs to be, I mean, you can't replace old growth. So, what kind of mitigation, what kind of punitive issues need to be brought forth? I think that's wrong, and it was deceptive, and, you know, it's affecting the citizens.
I agree.
Well, that was one of my questions. What are the consequences now, since that's taken place? In addition to that, I had a conversation with you in regards to the start time, that they start to work because it's before 7:00. And I live a couple of blocks away, and I can hear all the construction equipment going on, and I was told they weren't supposed to start before 7:00, and they're still doing that as well.
Yeah, they, when we did get that email last week that they were in there, and it was just a little bit after 6:00, maybe 6:15, 6:20. So, that first day that we went out there, I explicitly told the developer, who was, there were about four workers that were out there, along with Jeff Summitt, who had met us, that by no means can they even start their engines before 7:00. And that's what was occurring. They were out there, you know, revving their diesel engines up for their machinery, and you can't do that either. I said, "You can come to the site, you can sit in your car, you can walk around, but don't start anything." And so, that was, otherwise, they will get a stop work order, and we'll figure out that. But...
Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, I mean, so, with situations like this, the starting point is always, what did we approve? What was in the plans? What was in the developer's agreement? On the trees save plan, are they subscribing to that trees save plan? On the utility plan, are they subscribing to the utility plan? In the developer's agreement, are they subscribing to all the things that they laid out there? So, that would be my starting point. If there's discrepancies versus what was verbally represented, either in the public hearing, with residents, with the developer, with us, and it didn't manifest itself in the actual plan, that's a miss, and I'll take personal accountability for that. That's a miss on my part for not digging deep enough to say, "Hey, I see you got a sewer line going up north versus to Mount Sterling." I would be, I would, I would challenge the notion that we ever talked about having an issue with utility connecting to Mount Sterling, because that would be, from my unexpert opinion, really a non-issue for residents, because it would be under the ground eventually, and it's, the biggest issue was vehicular, and even to a certain extent, pedestrian traffic going from that neighborhood to Mount Sterling. So, I guess where I stand right now is, can't glue the trees back in, right? We do have trees that are still existing, that are still of importance, you know, to the residents that are on Mount Sterling. I guess really, from where I stand, is, can we work with the developer, with them to see if there's potential to reroute that to Mount Sterling, and just kind of save what we have right now? I get it. And so, that's kind of throwing my thoughts out there.
You want to have Jason? Jason, you want to come up and...
Actually, there's a couple of speakers. I'd be happy to address it, but I'd be happy to last, because there are all the comments. I know that I see a couple of other folks are calling in to talk about the same thing. I'm happy to do it now, Mayor.
Is that good? You're good? Okay. All right. Jason, come on.
I imagine he's going to echo this gentleman's comment.
Yeah, sure.
I've got it.
Thank you, Jim. Good afternoon. Jason Searle, Gray Robinson, 301 East Pine Street, Orlando. I know this is not an agenda item... Orlando. I know this is not an agenda item. I got word of this about two hours ago. So apologies to those who are patiently waiting for their agenda items. I do feel this is worthy of a response. I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. And frankly, thank you, Commissioner Becker. You've appropriately framed the question. Everything is guided by the DA. And just real quickly to get back in our time machines, in 19, we did not one, but two DAs. One was approved in April. The later one, which restated and amended the original one and added further concessions, was approved in December. Both of which have utilities exhibit, which is approximately the same thing. And I'm happy to pass these down the line. They're both recorded in the public records. These were fully vetted by everyone. The notion that somehow there was no notice of the utility plan, the agenda items in the staff report would have copies of the agreement and the exhibits. All of this was very public. This was, of course, made pursuant to the dialogue that started with the no vehicular access to Mount Sterling conversation. And that genesis gave rise to the first DA and then additional concessions and more details in the second DA. So this is not, and it's a little frustrating. I literally found out about this two hours ago. And I've had not a bunch of time to have many conversations. Unfortunately, Jeff Summit had a prior commitment. My client had a medical appointment. My understanding is that everything is being done out there, is being done compliant with the DA, the plan that's attached to the DA, as well as both the landscaping plan and the permitted plans for construction. But I'm going to walk through if I may. And again, apologies to those who are waiting their turn. But just a couple of points in the DA that I'd like to talk through. The second one in December, amended and restated, although the utilities exhibit, which is B, is essentially the same to both agreements. And it provides a gravity sewer connection point at the north end of the property. And if I may, I'm going to hand this to pass down. It also had a reclaimed water connection and water connection down that property line on the eastern side. Both DAs have the same exhibit. And I'll pass that down so you can see for yourself. Additionally, the landscape buffer maintenance, this is the December DA, "We will maintain landscape buffer yards on the northern and eastern boundaries in accordance with the standards in the LDC, which we have done. In the case, trees and vegetations within the buffer yards are removed or destroyed. Developers shall replace trees and vegetations," quoting, "such that the buffer yards constitute a semi-opague barrier as defined of the LDC. We'll incorporate this obligation into any CCNRs for the HOA." All three of those things we have done.
And that for 25 feet, right, and is the?
There was a landscape buffer plan that was provided.
Right.
It actually, we rounded off that northern corner. And by rounding off the corner, not doing a hard 90, you actually provide a larger buffer area. This landscape tree save plan was reviewed and approved by the city. It did not show any tree preservation in the sewer connection area. That's illogical. You can't put a sewer line under the ground if there's a tree there. We provided for more buffer area than the DA requires. We've complied with the buffer yards requirements under the DA, in my opinion, unless somebody, and I found out about this two hours ago, unless somebody tells me otherwise, this is my understanding, talking to my client, talking to Jeff Summit, the project engineer, the last hour or so. Additionally, as Mr. Hitt cited, the connection points are as more particularly described on Exhibit B, attached here too and incorporated, to which the city hereby agrees and accepts, any such utilities connection points along the Mount Sterling Avenue side of the project as sufficient and approved for the project. This is going on a year ago. The first DA was 18 months ago. I'm going to pass both of the DAs down the line. But I, I'm looking at this in a completely different way than you're looking at it. So I, I don't know what either staff is missing or I'm missing, but it's pretty plain as what we agreed to. And as I stood up here in the public hearing process, and remember, this was a long, arduous process. And I said, "We're going to do exactly what we said we're going to do." My understanding is that was, that's what we're doing. So unless counsel or Mr. Hitt or somebody else tells me how I'm not doing it, we're going to proceed. Now, under the DA, if we are not doing what we're supposed to, there's an enforcement provision, which says, "You're to send us written notice explaining why we're failing in what we're doing." There's been some emails exchanged between Jim and Jeff, but nothing that says, "Hey, here's where you're failing," nothing showing the landscape plan that says, "Here's what you're ripping out a tree that you said you were going to save. You're putting utilities in the wrong place." If there is, we're to get 30 days to cure the default. So that's the second part of this, is my ask. So one clarify, two ask. We don't believe we should be stopping the work. We don't believe we're doing anything wrong. If the city believes otherwise, please let us know. As we've gone through this entire process, I think every member of the commission and staff knows that we went above and beyond on this project to show good faith and to work with the residents and the city to bring off a successful project for all. So if I'm missing something or Jeff's missing something, or the person out there doing the work is missing something, please let us know. But I'm hoping that this will end. My client had to send a crew home. That costs money. You're losing time. As you know, this process to get to where we are today took a lot of time. So we want to proceed as expeditiously, expeditiously as possible. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if I may, can we flash this on overhead maybe? That may be easier just with everything going on these days. I'll just put these on the overhead. These are both recorded, public records. The city has them on staff in the file. The first DA, which was amended and restated from April, has this exhibit.
And while he's looking at that, Jim, can I tee you up for a question? When there's discrepancies in the tree save plan versus the comment that Mr. Searle just made about not having trees and a utility line, kind of that, that footprint, which ways, which wins out? Because I'm looking at the landscape plan too that we approved in December. And I'm tracking the utility line that's going north. But at the same time, I still see three trees in that line that are in a save box, in addition to some three other ones where it makes the connection point up to Gaelic. So if we have discrepancies there, what's the tiebreaker?
And I'll, I'll pass the mic back to Mr. Hitt so he can answer that question for you. There's the first exhibit. That's the sewer connection, water and reclaimed water connection. The only reason I show you this, this is the first DA. The exhibit is exactly the same on the second DA that was done six months later. When you zoom in on that, that says gravity sewer connection. This says reclaimed water and water connection.
Thank you. Jim, if you want to answer his question. I, I don't know the repercussions of, of this being approved. I know that the design itself, that it doesn't have a distance location. It doesn't show that the connection going up to Gaelic Court is between two lots. There is a landscape plan that does show the, the general location of the, of the, of the sewer line. And it does show a few different trees that are, looks, looks like they would end up having to be taken out. But what's, what's occurring out at the site, though, is that there's a lot of extra underbrush and other trees that are being taken out. So the big question to me is, is it too much or is it, we, you know, we did get a tree, a tree permit, a removal permit, that was a little over $13,000 for some of the trees. And I don't know how far or how close that is compared to what they've actually taken out yet. We'd have to do that research for it.
Do you think this will show up on that screen? Do you think this will show up there?
Don't know.
Because I think it'd be helpful.
Never done a pad on a pad.
That's what I'm referring to. So you have your line going on, the trees that are designated to save, and if those have been taken out. What's the tiebreaker?
I could not, I don't think any of those have actually been taken out. There, I know that the area between the, where the sewer line is shown here and where the edge of the water retention pond is, there's probably about 10 feet. And everything to the west of that is all taken out.
I'm just responsible with Mr. Searle's.
But I'm not sure about those three.
That line is going straight up there. Those trees would then need to be removed.
Those, those three would probably be removed and probably at least that one on the lower right.
And that's my ultimate question, is what, what's the tiebreaker? What's more important in this plan, the tree protection plan or is it the utility plan?
We're under an obligation to the DA, if we remove trees, replant them under that provision. I, I don't know the answer to your question in terms of which plan is more important. I, I believe the exhibit from the DA's shows that the plan was always to run the sewer through that connection point. That was something that was discussed and known. And I think there were multiple meetings on that between the city and the project engineer. The landscape plan came after the DA. I wish Jeff was here to answer that question direct. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't know the answer.
Jason, is there, can you put that back up just for a second? And I know we're kind of deep, deep into this thing already. Is there a way that we could, instead of running the line right down the, the property line, that we could move the line over past a 25-foot buffer from Mount Sterling?
Over along here.
Yeah.
What they were telling me is that because there's a slope on the land, it would end up being probably two to three times deeper. But if they do a directional bore, basically they, they could actually come right through this way.
Yeah.
And that's what, that's what Jeff said, that he was going to take a look at to see if it's possible. But in terms of moving it over, that's another Jeff question. Sorry.
Yeah, no, I just, I'm thinking as a, kind of a, move it over where the trees have already been removed.
I'm with you, Mayor. I, I don't want to be here having this conversation either.
No, no, I know, I know.
So, yeah, I, I, Jeff and Jim are talking about it and we said we'd look at it, then of course, yes, we'll look at it. So we just want to get back to doing the project.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's my specific point. That was one of the specific contentions and questions that different ones that I had talked with, they want to know, are we going to save those trees? And that was what I thought was presented there. And again, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Becker, because for what you're saying is, well, we have the right to move them. Well, then, if we're sold and we make a decision based on, no, these will be saved and then they're not, to me, that's a, you know, a lost leader here. And that's what I have the issue with, because that was a specific thing that the citizens said, "Hey, this is a compromise." Okay. If that's going to happen, I know you all compromised. We all worked through this a long time. But that's, that's a big one to me. So if there's a way to work around that, great. But it also makes me more aware moving forward in.
Developers shall replace the trees and vegetation such that the buffer yards constitute a semi-opague barrier as defined of the LDC and as portrayed in an approved landscape plan as prescribed under the LDC. So we're obligated to do that.
I'll leave it up to the lawyers to, to debate legalese, right? But again, there's, there's trees and vegetation in the buffer area. And then there's the tree, very specific tree protection plan.
Correct.
To me, if you're viola, I use the word violating, this is probably the wrong word to use. But if you're going against what's in the tree protection plan, I would think that there would have to be some coordination with staff in order to do so. Whereas on the normal buffer, that area that is agreed upon in terms of buffer, hey, if you're taking down a, some, some palm brush or a small pine or what have you.
Correct.
Okay. But again, that's for people that, with much cooler degrees than me to, to work out. But I, I think we all get the spirit of what's going on here.
Yeah. Look, there's two different situations. Hey, can you take a look at doing this in the alternative? And we said yes, and we will. But then there's also, here's what the agreement provides and here's what we're doing. And I, part of this is I wanted to clear the air that we're somehow doing something that is either news to somebody or has not been approved. And that's not my understanding of what's going on out there. So with that, I guess we'll essentially circle back to where it is between Jeff and Jim, that we're going to work this out. And alternatively, if we're not, tell us what we're doing wrong and give us the 30 days under the agreement to fix it, because we want to fix it and move this project forward. And I, I just wanted to be here so that...
Yeah, we appreciate your comment, Jason.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate it.
Yeah, okay. Do you want to come?
And Mr. Hitt, will you show us again where you're talking about the alternative plan?
About what? I'm sorry?
The alternative plan for the sewer connection. Can you show that again?
I never used this before, so. This probably doesn't show up on the beam, but... Right now, they, the sewer connection right now that they're using is up at Gaelic. They're cutting through, there's a, actually a utility easement right here. And then it's cutting this way down to right about here. And then it's cutting out over this way towards their street. The, Jason, you said it was, it was reclaim and water is coming here at the end of Mount Sterling. So there's actually a manhole cover there for sewer. So my thought is, connect there and bring all of those in at the same location. And...
I think Jeff thinks he can't do it from an engineering perspective, which is why he put it out to the north in the original utilities plan. And it's got to flow with the tote.
Downhill, yeah.
Yeah, it has to move downhill.
Yeah, I'm not going to say that. So now the other option, oh, that was the other option that I mentioned at the beginning is, he's looking to see whether or not they can do a directional bore and how long that bore would be, because there's distance requirements, to go basically cutting at the same location. But instead of cutting over this way and this way, basically they'd be able to go down this way towards the street itself.
Towards which street?
Well, the, the, yeah, the internal street is, give or take here. I don't have a plan, you know, to show you where the, where the street is and the lots.
Okay. Okay. Corey, you got that? I guess we're going to try to huddle up and get, get back to, I know we've got your email address and all that. So we'll, we'll huddle up engineer to, engineer and try to get, get some kind of answers for you here tomorrow, hopefully.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I certainly sympathize with the developer's situation as well. It does seem like there is some miscommunication somewhere in between the developer and the residents. And I just hope we can get it cleared up.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay. Susan, who else you got?
Hank Dunn.
Yeah.
I don't need it. I don't need it. Hank Dunn, 665 Mount Sterling, Apopka. I'm going to use an example. I, I hope it's not too crass, but it is the political season, so I will use it. In my old world, we used to say, "It's not who votes, who counts the votes." And so I would say the same thing here. It's not who says what they say in public, it's who writes the LD. And so the LD doesn't reflect anything that we talked about, as you're mentioning here. We, there was no expectation that trees, and I'm the least affected. As it turned out, the trees taken are where Corey's house is and several of his houses down. But we're all in this together. We came in as a group. So I'm here to ask for that review. There is nothing you can do to save a 50-year-old, 100-year-old tree, whatever they were, that had been taken down. And you can't replace them with a six cali, six-inch caliber tree. It's just not the same. So I, I think there needs to be something to be looked at. Is it the way the LD was done? Because again, I'm sorry. Was it the way the LD was done or was it what we understood? So I think that's the problem we're having. What we expected to happen, what we thought was happening, is different. And then I want to leave it with one more thing, because if this can happen after we thought we'd come to an agreement, when you look at the current plan, even though the LD says you will not access through Mount, through Mount Sterling to get into Rock Springs Ridge, the development plan has no house listed where that comes out, where you could connect to, to Mount Sterling. So if you can take out trees that weren't there, can you eventually connect to Mount Sterling? And so I just ask you to be aware of those issues. And those are the concerns we have. Not trying to be mean or nasty about it, but again, what, what we expected to happen, what did happen, was two different things. Thanks. Thank you.
I will add to that, though. That, that is a, a point that I made clear in the public hearing. And I'll, I'll have Mr. Searle head nod for me. But on that development plan, that track that envelops the entire development is a, I don't know if we're, we're calling that a landscape buffer or landscape track, whatever it's called. But there would be no, that would have to come back before council to redo that development. that development plan in order for that to legally happen, to make that, any, any sort of connection between Hammrick and Mount Sterling. And I, that's on record during, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I have David Hoffman.
Okay.
Good afternoon, David Hoffman, Rock Springs Ridge.
Can you give us your address just for a minute, please?
Uh, yes, 3610 Tayside Court. I have commentary here and please excuse me for reading, that's what it's going to be. So I'll try to keep it compact and I want to be respectful, but at the same time, I'm going to be frank as well. We Rock Springs Ridge residents learned recently that the golf group, that is Bob Delarussa, Chad Barton, and their attorney Tucker Byrd have submitted an application to Apopka City to change their golf course property zoning from one home per acre to two homes per acre. This plan would allow for residential building on 150 acres, according to contractor David Evans, who spoke during the Zoom meeting on October 26th. This zoning change would emasculate Rock Springs Ridge as we know it. After participating in our community petition drive over two weeks ago, I can assure you that there is unbending opposition to this zoning change. The many people my wife and I talked to, without exception, are stone wall resistant to any further residential building in our beautiful community. Not one person uttered even one word of support for possible negotiating or compromise uplifting and inspiring unity. These people, these good people want their home investments and community value sustained. Non-resident, out-of-town wealthy plutocrats are pushing to recoup losses from a mismanaged golf course investment. If we look at our 11-and-a-half-year crisis through a moral fair play lens, we win, our side of the debate hands down. Excuse me? Well, I just wanted to say that what we learned from the Zoom meeting is that there was discussion, a debate about the degree to which a community was complicit in the decline of the golf course. And I will say, after having been involved for 11-and-a-half years, close up with this issue, that I don't recall the golf group ever having a meeting with the community at large to discuss a way to restore the revenue stream necessary to uphold the golf course. I don't remember that happening. And so the question becomes, if their intent on developing the course, and it appears that they are wishing to recoup their losses, why should we residents give up the value of our homes or our family legacies, Family Week, so that they can recoup their losses? And on the scales of justice, let's consider that for a moment. We have blind lady of justice, one scale, 1,320 homeowners on one scale, three wealthy out-of-town investors, the other scale. The blind lady of justice and any four-year-old would know whose, whose side prevails there. We do. So I, I'm just saying that we have a lot of arguments on our side and we just hope that the city will abide by the wishes of your constituents. That's us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. Just briefly, I've come as a representative, I serve on the board of the Rock Springs Ridge Homeowners Association, and due to the feedback we are getting from our homeowners regarding this meeting, the Zoom meeting on the 26th of October, we had many members that could not log on, could not get in, and hence they felt that they were denied their opportunity to ask questions and denied their opportunities to ask for clarifications. And I respectfully and formally request that we have another meeting, perhaps maybe at the amphitheater. People want it live, I think you can spread out, any homeowner from that area will be able to get there. It saves the developer the opportunity of paying big dollars, it, it will also bring some cough, money into the coffers of the city by using that venue, but I think that this would be in the best interest of all the homeowners for Rock Springs Ridge. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Jim, is there a way we could, I, I'm, think I would rather not, way the COVID numbers are trending, I'd rather do another, maybe another Zoom. I mean, I, I understand, but, um, because if we want to do it rather soon, I would think we'd. I mean, I, if y'all want to weigh in, I, I, I'm a little hesitant. I would be fine if it were March or April.
I, I don't have problems with that, but I represent a community that's asked me to deliver this message and, and I'm, I'm not sure if people want to throw watermelons or not, I'm.
The only thing I'm interested in is, is having everybody have a fair say. So the, the challenge, I don't think the Zoom wasn't necessarily the challenge part, it was the inability to get into the Zoom meeting for a lot of people that were trying to get into it. So just offering that again, I think is more than fine.
And I don't know whether, they just not give enough, because I know you, you buy by the number of people coming into a Zoom meeting, so he, did he just not buy enough or do we know what really happened?
I don't really know for sure what happened with it. I know sometimes I know that it's very confusing to get in to some of the Zooms. You go in, you enter one set of numbers, it's another, oh wait, no, it's a different set. I, I don't know the answer. All I know is that there were feedback and I know, Mayor, you've received 40 or more emails and calls regarding the same and doing it, but some means of directing it. Again, our, the request, if we can possibly have it personally, if not, whatever, whatever we can do, understood COVID. And by the way, thank all of you for what you do because especially in this COVID, you do not, you do not deserve all the stuff that falls your way, but we thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
The only thing that would make me change my opinion is if the governor and whatever he's put down would preclude a meeting like that from happening virtually. That would be my only, if, if, if he's requiring those types of meetings to be in-person versus virtual, that's the only thing to consider.
Okay. So let me, I'll, I'll reach out to the governor and if we can do that as a Zoom meeting, yeah, I know there was, and the reason we have live meetings is because I'm not sure, you know, from a legal perspective.
It just, in regards to this meeting, because it's a community meeting, I do not believe that is a meeting that is contemplated under the governor's executive order. And I think, I just, I think what the copy, whether that it mandatory that it has to be done in person. So it falls outside. And I think I just got a copy today that the exec, because the, the virtual meeting executive order was scheduled to expire November 1st, I think, I think it just got extended. But this meeting, it's not a public meeting. This is just an informational meeting between a private developer and a private residence and a, and private residence. Therefore, it's not a sunshine meeting, it falls outside of the executive order and it really is up to the parties to determine what is the best way to, to have such a meeting.
So what, what would the commission like to do? I mean, we can, I'm happy to give it to them for free if that's, if.
Well, is it urgent that we can't wait until the February date you were talking about, that we need to meet before then? So we can meet openly and, and use the amphitheater as opposed to doing the Zoom?
Well, I'm not sure we'll know in February. I, I don't know when we'll know what, what.
I, I think we'd get a greater response if we could have it at amphitheater where people could be present as opposed to on Zoom. There, there.
Yeah, I, I.
There's some people who are not technology and trying, I'm not going to call my name, but anyway. So I think in person would be better.
I suffer from the same.
Yes.
Well, I mean, we can do it out there and we can, we can, we can try to do our best to, um, and I think Rod, maybe you could be kind of our conduit, say, listen, if you've already listened in on the Zoom, you know, let's, let's try to have the new, the next set of people that haven't been able to ask those questions. But, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do it there. I just, you know, the last thing I want is, you know, four weeks from now, we get, you know, the, the call that, you know, we've, we were super spread out at the, the amphitheater, so I.
Right, that's what I'm saying, do we have to have it immediately? I mean, what, what, do we have a timeframe?
Jim?
Let me chime in here. The, it was a staff suggestion to, to do the Zoom meeting. My understanding with the Zoom setups, the way Bobby runs the development review committee is that you can set the, the parameters so that they automatically connect and you can actually have up to 1,000 people connect and it's, it's the same charge, it doesn't cost anymore for, you know, that many more. So instead of letting them each one in, you know, where somebody has to manually say, okay, you can come, you can come in, you can, you can come in, they automatically attend. That's, that's what how, that's how our DRC Development Review Committee works. So what I've got to do is I'll, I'll talk with David Evans in regards to setting that up. If we wait till February, that's, the, the whole idea is, you know, they, they've got an application, we told them that they needed to get this community meeting going first. There were obvious, because I've got, I got a few emails and I know all of you've got some emails that they could not link in or they weren't accepted into the meeting, so that, that opportunity wasn't presented to them to be able to ask a question out of the chat portion. The applicant also, in their announcement for their, for their listing, they did give that option to email a question in and we did get a summary, they did give us a summary yesterday in regards to, or Monday, I think it was, in regards to the, the questions, the answers, and apparently there was a diagram that was presented. I don't have that, although we did get some other information that we haven't had a chance to go through to see what was actually presented at the, at the Zoom meeting. Because you can do share screen and things like that and everybody that has a computer can still see it. But I think if we make sure that the parameters are done properly, then the Zoom meeting can work. And then we don't have to worry about spreaders or anything like that.
I'm more than happy to do it either way. I, I tend to lean toward a Zoom meeting, just, just for a sense of, you know, safety, security, whatever, but, but I'm, if y'all want to do a, let them do a.
Well, I guess my question still is, when are we talking about doing it? I mean.
Well, my guess is, we, they, they have to give at least 14 days notice for the, for the meeting. So you're looking at least a two, probably two-to-three-week time period. So as soon as they can, you know, send out the information and, you know, for the, for the meeting itself is, and then once that's sent out, then it's 14 days from there.
But I guess that's still, once, because there's a spike in the numbers, if we're talking about waiting until December, January, February, do we have to have it now?
I think the applicant wants to have it as soon as possible. It's up to them.
Well, you have to before you even go down further in the application process.
Correct, correct.
I mean, the only complaints that I received personally was just the inability to get into the Zoom meeting. It wasn't the Zoom platform itself. If, if there was people that were complaining about that, they didn't complain about that to me. So if we can host it via Zoom, then just make sure that everybody has the right to voice their opinions, I think that gets us to where we need to get to.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree because.
It's also going to be pretty cold February, January, February, we never know, but we've had some pretty cold events along that.
Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and Jim, you'll get with the folks out.
Okay.
And we'll set up a Zoom meeting.
It may have been a technical issue because I know during the meeting Evans kept on saying, okay, I'm adding in, I'm adding, I'm adding in, and I think that may have been part of the, part of the holdup.
Kind of hard to concentrate when you're hitting people all the time.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, so we just do the, the automatic.
Yeah.
Everybody's in.
If I, if I may add, I want to counsel the council that under the LDC, they've already had their community meeting and if this is the community meeting of which the subject was the comprehensive plan amendment, that such a meeting is optional, that this council cannot mandate, there's no authority under the land development code for this council to mandate another community meeting. It really is up to the developer and the residents if they can arrange and have it secure and, and have it performed. But there's no authority, this council doesn't have the authority to mandate a community meeting to be held between the two.
Even if they weren't available.
So.
In regards to the, in regards to a comp plan amendment, a community meeting is optional. When it comes time for the amendment to the plan, to plan, of the plan development agreement, that's where it is required under the code, that there be a community meeting.
Well, I don't know what the law says, but if someone's being forced out of said community meeting by not, by not being allowed in the virtual waiting room, past the virtual rating room, they haven't checked the box, in my opinion.
I think that where, where we're at is we may, if you as a council want to suggest, but you cannot mandate. If the developer elects, look, and if, if the developer hypothetically says, I don't have the technology, I can't do that, we've already had the meeting, I'm moving forward, under the LDC, there's no authority for the council, for the city to say, no, you must have a second community meeting in regards to the subject matter being the land development.
Like it's split hairs and say they haven't checked the box and had the community meeting yet because they willfully did not allow people to participate that should have been allowed to participate.
Where we're at at this point, though, is because the subject matter is a amendment to the comprehensive plan, under our land development code, we are deferring to chapter 163 for the process for land for comp plan amendments and that such a meeting is optional at that point. There, I, I do not see under the code where we have the authority, the city mandates or, or that the application is insufficient because such a meeting was not held. And I, and I, I would just advise whether this is not necessarily a position that the city wants to take against vis-à-vis the developer in regards to the land development code. We can suggest, and if the developer agrees and, and decides they want to move forward, that would be fine. I think compelling or using the authority of the city to mandate, I would advise that under the land development code for comp plan amendments, such a community meeting is optional.
We, we did get a, like I mentioned, we did get a summary of the meeting with, which had a listing of 22 questions that were asked and they were either emailed in or, or asked over the course of the, the Zoom meeting. But I can talk with the applicant and the engineer and find out if they are willing to do another application or another meeting and if they aren't, then what we can do is make sure that this gets sent out.
I think, I think.
And then that way.
I think Rod Olson's already got that, all those.
Yeah, well, I, I just gave him a hard copy, I'm going to email him a copy.
Okay.
But that way, that way they'll, some of those questions probably would have been answered with those 24. And in, in that case, what would end up happening, we'd go to the development review committee, we'd go through that process, then we'd bring it to planning commission, planning commission would make a recommendation for approval or denial to the city council, and then we'd bring it to city council. At those, at those two public meetings, that's when the public would be able to come to make comments.
And do we know how many people were on the Zoom call?
It was 150-some, I think he said at one point toward the end of the meeting.
Those are the ones that I got.
Mayor, is this a bit if you're talking about our Zoom plan? Are you using ours?
No.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so I, well, let's do this, we'll at least ask the applicant and then I, at that point, you know, we, I don't know what our, it doesn't sound like we have a lot of options.
I'll, I'll reach out to David Evans personally as well.
Okay.
And, and we did, the Zoom meeting was recorded by David Evans. I forwarded to you and the materials and we shared that with all, but we still had people saying, I didn't have a chance to ask my questions, I'm.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Don't kill the messenger. Okay. All right. Anybody else from public wish to speak on the matter? On, on, no, David, we're, we're, we're good. Okay. We will move on to consent agenda?
He said anybody else want to speak to the issue.
Now, we've already, we've, I've already done public comment, everybody's had their four minutes.
Wait a minute, you just got through asking a question.
Okay, David, come on up. Come on up. Come on up.
Okay, I'm kind of astonished.
Give your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. David Hoffman, 3610 Tayside Court. I'm, I'm kind of astonished that you, Attorney Rodriguez, it seems like you have a pattern of going to bat for builders and developers. Is that right?
You don't need to answer that.
I'd like, I'd like to know, are you going to advocate?
No, sir.
Are you going to advocate for people in our community?
No, sir, I'm advocating for the land development code and advocating on, as the council to this city in regards to its codes and, and Florida statutes.
I, I think you're splitting, I think you're splitting hairs.
At, at this point, I have no, I have no further to add.
At, at this point, I have no, I have no further to add.
Okay. All right. Consent agenda. Does anybody need to pull any of the items off the consent agenda? If not, look for a motion to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. First up, Oak Point North Apartments, Bobby Howe.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Bobby Howe, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. The applicant is requesting approval of a major development plan for a 240-unit apartment complex and eight three-story buildings that will be developed in one phase. Property is 16 acres in size and is located on tract A of the Oak Point North subdivision. You can see it's outlined in the fuchsia on the screen in front of you. Property is accessed via one access point that is located on the northern portion of the site and an one exit only gate that is located on the southern portion of the site that leads into the site are located along track G of the Oak Point North subdivision. Track G is the roadway that was outlined in the approved development agreement back in 2019, I believe. A total of 423 parking spaces are provided on site, while 306 are required to be provided for the apartment use. 12 short-term and 60 long-term bicycle parking spaces are provided on the site. 10% of the site is required to be preserved as open space. The applicant is preserving approximately 15.9% of the site as open space. A clubhouse and a pool are provided in building one, which is located on the front of the site adjacent to the roadway noted as track G. And it's located next to the adjacent main point of access leading into the development. The architectural guideline, um, elevations are consistent with the elevation guidelines and our development design guidelines in the land development code. The development review committee recommends approval, planning commission recommends approval, and staff recommends approval. The applicant and staff are available for questions.
Okay. Any questions for Bobby?
With the water presentation, we noticed it's right next to the ribs. Does this create any potential issue? I don't know what the elevation is here or anything. I mean, that's just got me real leery.
This was vetted through the development review committee, public works, develop, the city engineer. Uh, I think it went through three times before it got to planning commission. So there are no issues that we're aware of.
And it's not below flood plain? It's not in a, something that will jeopardize the community that was discussed earlier?
Yeah. To my knowledge, it's not in a flood plain.
Okay.
Is this, is this considered separate from the other in construction phase of this Oak, Oak Point?
Correct.
Is this autonomous?
This is autonomous. It's off on its own.
Okay. Another question. Uh, the transportation element talks about, um, the right end, left end from Akoye Apopka. It's not in the plan that I saw, but how do we memorialize that to make sure? Cause it says that it's a condition of approval. Uh, where do we have that notated?
It would be a condition of approval of the site plan.
Do we need to, say that again?
A condition of approval of the major development plan.
Which is the, which is this? Do we have to motion it that way?
You could if you felt comfortable doing that, yes.
Okay.
Okay. You might have the applicant come forward. Good.
All right.
Yes, he gonna come forward?
Good afternoon, council members. David Evans, Evans Engineering, 719 Irma Avenue, Orlando, 32803. Here on behalf of the applicant for the Oak Point North Tract A apartment development. Uh, we have read staff's comments and reviewed them and concur. I'm here to answer any questions you may have on, on their behalf. Uh, do want to point out that the infrastructure for this particular tract, which we called Oak Point North, was previously approved. Uh, we've actually had a pre-construction conference already with the city of Apopka. That included the turn lanes on Akoye Apopka, both right and left. And it is the only access for this particular piece of property. So, um, that sort of precedes this development. And the developer that's working on this particular project is going to build the whole entire project on the north side.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, look for a motion.
Can I motion it that way?
Sure, absolutely.
So I would move to approve with the A right and left turn lane is required at the entrance at, on Akoye Apopka Road per the city's land development code and include it as a condition of this approval.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, List Industries, Jean Sanchez. You won, Jean. I didn't think she'd make this, today's meeting, but that's a dedicated employer right there.
You lost that, poor man. Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the List Industries' major development plan. Subject property is located in the southeast corner of 441 and Orange Avenue. Here's the area of the property. It shows that, um, it is surrounded by light industrial uses and there are, um, a few buildings on site that is proposed to be demolished to be replaced by this proposed building. The List Industries' major development plan proposes a development of 82,735 square feet of warehouse to replace existing buildings on site. Warehouse use and user will remain the same. Egress, egress access points for the development will be via full access onto Orange Avenue. A mixture of crepe myrtle, Japanese privet, and wax myrtles are proposed on the western and southern boundaries along Orange Avenue. Landscape plan meets the requirements of the land development code. Shown are the proposed architectural renderings consistent with the requirements of the, of the development design guidelines. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission at its October 13, 2020 meeting recommended approval. And the recommended motion is to approve the List Industries' major development plan subject to the findings of the staff report. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Okay. Is the applicant here? Anything to add?
Good afternoon. Rodney Gadd with Gadd and Associates, 1925 U.S. Highway 98 South in Lakeland. Appreciate staff's worked with us really well through this process and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve the major development plan for List Industries.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, the Western Beltway Park, Bobby Howe.
Thank you. Once again, Bobby Howe, Planning Manager. The applicant is requesting approval of a major development plan for two warehouse buildings totaling 189,000 square feet in area that will be developed in one phase. Property is located at 2550 Akoye Apopka Road and is 18.08 acres in size. It's outlined in the purplish color that you see on the screen. The site will be accessed via Akoye Apopka Road via two full access points which are located adjacent to the northern property line and approximately in the center of the site. Right and left turn lanes will be constructed leading into the site at both access points. And that's in accordance with the land development code requirements. A total of 255 parking spaces are provided on site. In addition, the applicant has reserved an area ranging in width between 14 and 30 feet along the portion of the property of budding Akoye Apopka Road for future right-of-way needs at such time that Orange County deems it necessary to require right-of-way for the future widening of Akoye Apopka Road. 8.4% of the site is reserved as open space, while the land development code requires a minimum 5% for properties that are zoned light industrial. The applicant is providing a 15-foot wide landscape buffer along Akoye Apopka Road and along the northern portion of the site, the northern property line of the site. There'll be a 15-foot wide landscape buffer. The architectural elevations are consistent with the land development code as well as the development design guidelines. The development review committee and the planning commission both unanimously recommend approval. Uh, staff recommends approval and the applicant is here for questions as well.
Okay. Any questions for Bobby? Okay. The applicant want to come forward?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Sam Sibali. I'm with Florida Engineering Group. My address is 5127 South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida. I'm here on behalf of the owner and I do concur with the staff recommendations and I would be glad to address any questions which you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Sam? All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve of the major development plan for Western Beltway Park.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up. Jeff Weatherford, speaking of stormwater.
Good afternoon. Um, as y'all are aware, uh, we came to you back in May asking for a $150,000 appropriation to do some improvements, um, at Martin's Place Phase Two subdivision. Uh, the subdivision was built back in the 1980s. It had a stormwater detention pond that was to be maintained by the homeowners association. Unfortunately, the homeowners association disbanded sometime back in the 90s and the pond went to disrepair. And, um, earlier this year, we had a overflow collapse there that impacted, uh, right away on Vic Road and the city was forced to come in to take some action. Uh, May 6th, you approved the $150,000 and as the developer, or the contractor got out to start doing the work with our engineering team, we found some additional issues that needed to be addressed. Uh, so today we're asking you for an additional appropriation of $31,470. As you may recall, that upon the completion of the work and once we determine the final cost, then this will be, um, the city will pursue a special assessment district where the property owners will pay for the improvements over a period of time.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll look for a motion to approve the additional funding for the emergency project for Martin Place Phase Two.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2795.
Okay. Ordinance number 2795. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, adopting 2020, 2021 through 2025, 2026, five-year capital improvement, annual update, providing for legislative findings, providing for exclusion from codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. No changes. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2795.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2796.
Ordinance number 2796. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use map designation from county low-density residential to city low-density residential for certain real property located north of West 12th Street and east of South Hawthorne Avenue comprising .41 acres more or less and owned by Beckwood Real Estate Development LLC, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner II with the city's planning division. The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment from county low-density residential to city low-density residential for approximately .41 acres. The subject area is highlighted in yellow and located at the northeastern intersection of South Hawthorne Avenue and West 12th Street. To the north, east, and west are single-family homes, and to the south is a place of worship. The property is currently zoned transitional district and an application for RSF 1B zoning has been submitted and will be presented at the next agenda item. The subject area is approximately .41 acres with residentially zoned or residentially oriented properties being in the vicinity. The development review committee and planning commission recommend approval of the proposed small-scale future land use amendment from county low-density residential to city low-density residential. And the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2796 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on November 18th, 2020. This concludes my presentation and the applicant and I are happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay. We'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2796 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2797.
Okay. Ordinance number 2797. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T transitional district to RSF dash 1B, single-family residential district, large lot for certain real property located north of West 12th Street and east of South Hawthorne Avenue comprising of .41 acres more or less and owned by Beckwood Real Estate Development LLC, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
The applicant is proposing to rezone, uh, property from transitional district to RSF 1B for the same subject property as the previous agenda item. The proposed RSF 1B is found within the vicinity and is compatible with the previously proposed residential low future land use, which is also found in the vicinity. The development review committee and planning commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning from T transitional district to RSF 1B residential single-family district, large lot. And the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2797 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on November 18th, 2020. This concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay. We'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2797 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2804.
Ordinance number 2804. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial, territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to section 171.044 Florida statutes, the here and after described public right-of-way known as Shepherd Avenue, situated and being in Orange County, Florida and comprised of approximately .99 acres, owned by Orange County Board of County Commissioners, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
This is a proposed annexation for a portion of the Shepherd Avenue right-of-way consisting of an approximate .99 acres. The subject area is highlighted in yellow on the right map and is currently an open unimproved right-of-way. And the subject area is adjacent to the city limits and within the joint planning agreement area established between Orange County and the city of Apopka. The development review committee recommends approval of the annexation for the portion of Shepherd Avenue. And the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2804 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on November 18th, 2020. This concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil?
What, what's the driver behind this one?
The east adjacent property owner is interested in commercially redeveloping that southwestern intersection of Lakeview Drive and state, and, and West Orange Blossom Trail. Um, the representative for the property owner is in the audience today. If there was, uh, anything you want to add to that.
Well, I mean, will we keep that right of way or is that going to be part of some other transaction later on?
The application is incomplete at this time, but there is interest in vacating that unimproved right-of-way and, um, expanding nearby properties as well as addressing intersection issues for Lakeview Drive and West Orange Blossom Trail.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Phil? Good. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2804 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2805.
Ordinance number 2805. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Apopka by amending Part III Land Development Code, Article II Administration, Section 2.5.1 discretionary approvals by amending Part III, Article II, Section 2.5.4, Section 3.2.3, AG Agricultural District by amending Part III, Article III, Section 3.5.4, IL Light Industrial District by industrial, by amending Part III, Article III, Section 3.5.4, IH Heavy Industrial District by amending Part III, Article IV, Use Regulations, Table 4.2.2C by amending Part III. by amending Part III, Article IV, Section 4.2.3, Standards Specific to Principal Uses, by amending Part III, Article V, Development Standards, Section 5.3.2, applicability, by amending Part III, Article V, Section 5.6.2, applicability, by amending Part III, Article V, Section 5.13.2, Minimum Street Design and Construction Standards, by amending Part III, Article V, Section 5.13.4 Streets, by amending Part III, Appendix A, Mixed Kelly Use Park Interchange, MUKPI, Form-Based Code F, permitted uses by amending Part III, Appendix A, Mixed Use Kelly Park Interchange, MUKPI, Form-Based Code O, signs, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Okay.
That's what you were all waiting for, right? Jim Head, Community Development Director. This is the third set of glitch amendments that will help to update, clarify, and amend the content of the Land Development Code. Development Review Committee did look through these, and also the Planning Commission also recommended unanimously for the approval towards you. So, to begin with, again, this is the third set. This affects five out of the 10 articles and along with Appendix A, which is the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area. And it's approximately 12 sections within those articles along with Appendix A. This is the, you know, obviously the first reading. Second reading is scheduled right now for November 18th and in two weeks. Part of the package, I did provide a summary, quick summary, that basically showed that the, each of the different sections that's affected, and I was just going to go run through these, or if you have any particular questions, I can do that also. You let me know what you want me to do. Would you like me to go ahead and run through them, or?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. So the first one is under administration, and it's, this is one of those things that as we get different codes and we realize different sections were either there before or we amended and clarified, and in this case, what we are taking out is the referencing the distance separation requirements for like uses for special exceptions. This came up because we had a development on the north side of town at Welch Road and Rock Springs Road that wanted to put in a gas station across the street from another gas station. Most gas stations are typically on corners. It was within the 1,000-foot distance. So it seemed kind of lame to be able to say, "You can't have a gas station where normally gas stations would end up going." And looking at the code, we realized there were also other uses that were required to have a special exception because they were, they could be within the 1,000-foot distance. And just some of those that I listed are churches. Couldn't have a church within 1,000 feet of another church. Cultural facilities, trade schools, service stations, machinery shops. So basically, if you had an industrial district, you couldn't put two machinery shops next to each other unless they got a special exception. This is, it just didn't make sense for staff to have to do a special exception going towards, taking that to Planning Commission when it's like uses. People typically don't put a like use near another like use if they haven't done the research in the first place to see if it's going to float or not. Child cares, ALFs, those are just some of the uses. So staff has recommended we take out that portion and basically allow like uses to be within 1,000 feet. The second one has to do, the second portion has to do with arbor permits. Updating the regulations per Florida statutes for, basically, arborists can, if there's a tree that's on the site and it's a hazard and an arborist says, "Yes, it's a hazard", we can, we basically, we have to allow them to take that tree down, especially if an arborist says that it's a hazard. So this is reflecting that.
Jim, do you want me to clarify that?
Yes.
That portion is to come in line with the exemption, the preemption?
Thank you.
Or the purported preemption, like I like to call it, that the legislature adopted, I believe it was two years ago, which states that a, for a tree removal does not require a permit if the applicant submits to the city a determination from a certified, from an arborist or a certified landscape engineer, landscaping engineer, that the tree presents a danger to a residence. There, when it was initially adopted by the legislature, there has been a discussion as to the interpretation of it. Some folks have deemed it as it being a preemption, that the state has preempted basically tree removals from local governments, and folks are just removing trees and then coming in after the fact and saying, "Well, I have an arborist who told me I can remove it." The requirement is, you're still subject to tree removal permits. You're exempt from a tree removal permit if you submit. There's only one court case there. This was, the City of Pensacola was challenged by an applicant, and the Circuit Court in Pensacola did deem that, no, it's not a preemption. It is an exception. As the statute is written, you have to submit the report of an arborist or certified landscape engineer, and the city may rebut the conclusions of the arborist or landscape engineer. In the Pensacola case, they actually had a, their arborist rendered one opinion and then changed and rendered another opinion in order for the property owners to get their tree removed. That case is still pending in the First District Court of Appeals. It's been pending, they've been going back and forth procedurally for almost a year. But as it stands now, the language in the LDC was written to be consistent with the language that is in Florida statutes so that it's clear that we don't have a preemption. What we have is an exemption, but only if you abide by the requirements that are delineated in Florida statutes.
This one ties in, this is in Article II, under 2.5.4 for the permits. Article V, under Development Standards, that's the other section that it pertains to also with the residential properties defined, so that way they tie together. Just that in this case, we had two different sections that we had to make amendments to. The next section is Article III, Zoning Districts. This is one where we actually have, we still have quite a bit of agricultural property. And agricultural properties typically had been allowed to have mobile homes on those. This came up, we had a nursery that had an extra five acres and they wanted to put their caretakers, a mobile home on there for their caretaker so that they have a resident onsite to make sure nothing gets stolen or absconded with. So this actually allows for a mobile home to be on property if it's greater than five acres. Seemed reasonable. In addition to that, we're also updating the use table under agriculture to allow for a mobile home dwelling unit, which may be allowed in agricultural zoning districts with a minimum of five acres as the primary dwelling unit. So, because again, we're tying these things together. Article III, Zoning Districts. This comes from experience. We just, we just had a, an approval coming through for a master, or a major development plan for industrial, and we've had a few different zoning variances requesting for height. And so we did put the word out to the developers, asking, "What is the typical height that's needed for these industrial distribution centers?" And they said 42 to 43 feet. So what we are doing is recommending that our average, our maximum building height be updated for both light industrial and heavy industrial from 35 to 45 feet. Again, it just makes sense. You're trying to streamline the process as much as possible, and we're getting these requests in anyway, and they're getting passed anyway because it's industrial. However, I did add in a distance requirement for residential, regular residential for light industrials, a 30-foot separation, and for high industrial, which typically means it's a little bit more intense, probably a little bit more truck traffic, we put that at 100 feet. And that's protecting our current residents. The, let's see, Article IV, that was the one that allowed the minimum acreage for a mobile home. Article V, let me jump over here. In a continuation, under Article V, Section 5.6, exterior lighting, and then under 5.6.2 is applicability, is, number three is our streetlight assessment. You recently passed at the glitch amendment number two, the requirement for lighting and setting up a MSBU for lighting for subdivisions and also for non-residential subdivisions. This takes it a little bit further in that it requires not just that interior, but any developments, whether they're commercial or residential or non-residential, on the street itself that they border. It could be an arterial, could be a local street, could be a collector's street, that they also provide that lighting on the street itself. So basically, you don't get to the, there's a lot of areas that are very dark out there in terms of driving, and you can't see the entrance until you get to it. This will help fill in some of those blanks along some of the streets to allow for that lighting and then as part of the MSBU. The, oh, this is another section, Section 5.1.3, streets, roads, streets, sidewalks, and bikeways. And then this part here, I can't take credit for, this came from Public Services. Turns out that our requirements for street thicknesses and crowns were not up to everybody else's code, even Orange County's. So Narette and Jeff basically put this together, and I couldn't really answer the questions, but I know that it matches what the other jurisdictions now have. So instead of having to deal with potholes after, you know, like, you know, say five years, it might be 10 years now because we're actually thickening up the coating and also the base, the base itself. That obviously saves money in the long run. Another one that came up, under 5.1, 5.13.4 is streets and the road and street names themselves. This was basically relying on the applicant to come up with the street names. We didn't have any really repercussions or requirements to say that we have last choice. And so what this does is talk about the minor, for a minor development plan approval, that the developer submits proposed street names to the director for approval, and that the city shall have final approval of all street names. And then the minor and major development plans shall include the overall tract illustrating those street names. So basically, if somebody comes up with some wacky name that we just don't think is proper, we can override that. We can also make suggestions. Under mixed use, under, I'm sorry, Appendix A, Mixed Use Kelly Park Interchange, this was something that, it was, it was an interesting predicament because we, with COVID coming on, it kind of gave us a chance to look at how some of the developments are being developed. The original requirement was that restaurants and drive, with drive-up or drive-through facilities would not be allowed in the Village Center. That's the main area between, around the interchange at Kelly Park and Plymouth Sorento and the 429. However, some of those areas, because of the type of developments that are coming in and, you know, doing the call-in to pick up either curbside or at a, at a drive-through window, we felt that to be a little bit proactive instead of reactive, before we get a development coming in that needs, that already has potential for water and sewer, to add in another section for the Village Center, the employment, the interchange, and the transition neighborhood, that actually say, and this is, I'll read it right from what I've got in this for the public, is that sit-down restaurants with remote order system for curbside or pickup drive-through window service, no order box. That's the big difference, is that you can't just go up there and mumble something and then it gets mumbled back to you. But basically, you can go, do a drive-through pickup. Zaxby's, although they have an order box, you can just go up and pick up your food service at that point. But that would be allowed as a special exception, so this way, we still have some control in the Village Center. But in the, under the employment and the interchange, this is, as you kind of concentric circles going out, would be allowed as a permitted use. And then under the transition, which is, that's where you start working with the neighborhoods, as a special exception, and then the neighborhoods, we don't allow too much other than neighborhoods in the neighborhood area. And then the third portion, or the second portion, has to do with signs in the Kelly Park area. And we did take out pole signs because basically, pole signs aren't allowed in the rest of the city. So we felt, why should they actually be allowed in the Form-Based Code when this is supposed to be one of our premier development areas? So we took out the pole sign portion. We did increase the height from eight feet to 10 feet for a monument sign, and this is, the other reason for this is that a lot of these larger developments, like the Publix, they have multiple development or multiple tenants in those areas. So a 10-foot sign is, I think about a foot and a half taller than you, Commissioner Becker, so it's not, you're tall, but the sign itself, it's a little bit taller, but usually, they have a base on there also that takes up a foot to two feet. So you're looking at sign areas still about maybe eight feet or so. And then the square footage, and then?
Jim, if I was a foot and a half shorter than 10 feet, I think I'd be in the MBA not sitting up here.
Oh, okay. Okay. Can I have tickets? No. And then the other part that we, as I mentioned, we did take out the pole sign, but I did put it in as pole signs, and this is, we never know if there's a circumstance where if a development is lower in a, in a, in an area and they, well, the way I wrote it is, pole signs, if allowed by special exception due to a hardship precluding the use of a monument sign. That would probably be pretty hard to fathom. But again, if it's, if it's on a decline or a slope going down from the road, a 10-foot sign might end up being level with the road itself. So if you, if we allowed for a 12-foot sign in height, they still have a clearance of eight feet to the bottom of the sign, so nobody other, other than somebody that's in the MBA would hit their head. But then we also have a maximum of 32 square feet, so it's like a four-by-eight, like sheet plywood, size-wise. But again, that is only if, under a special exception, and only if they can, they have to prove to staff and the DRC that they can't do a monument sign in that location.
I'm reading, monument signs shall not exceed eight feet.
Oh, I'm sorry, eight feet. Correct, correct. It was six feet, we brought it up to eight feet. I'm sorry, I'm thinking, yes.
And that would be only about a foot and a half.
Yeah, there we go. That's what I was thinking of, yeah. And I believe that's, yeah, that's, that's the main changes that we've got.
Any questions for Jim? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2805 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2020-34.
Resolution 2020-34. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, providing for a budget amendment.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jamie Roberson, Finance Director, City of Apopka. Before you today, you have another budget amendment for another grant for the Police Department for the Department of Transportation grants. It was on the consent agenda for, earlier this afternoon. You have $62,000 for extra details for overtime pay and $4,000 for equipment purchasing, purchases for speed-measuring devices. So this will help assist with the programs that are outlined in that consent agenda item.
Any questions for Jamie?
Do these grants require matching funding?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will look for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-34.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Edward.
Mayor, I think you have your council reports first. City Council.
Go ahead. Mr. Banksen?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
Mr. Smith?
I just have, I guess, one inquiry, and I guess it's be for, I guess, Mr. Hitt or either Public Works. There's been several complaints about trucks and trailers parking in unauthorized places, especially alone. places, especially along the right-of-ways. Is it possible that we can look into finding someplace where they can actually park? That, this is their livelihood. And so I, I kind of understand and that they bring these vehicles home, but they're still consistently parking in, in other places. And so I don't know if there's someplace that we can find where they can legally park or work out with some businesses where they can, can do, do such.
Tractor trailers, they're, they're parking illegally.
Yeah, they're, they're still parking.
He's looking for some way to make them legal.
We, we run it from one place and they go someplace else. And so we just keep running them around. So maybe, maybe more beneficial if we could find a place where they can park. I know at, I think that's I-4, where you get off, they have like a land by the tow booth. They have this area where tractors and trailers can park.
They're limiting that now.
Oh, they are?
The one there by 434, yeah.
Yeah, that's a rest area for them to be able to sit. It's not allowing for unattended vehicles to be parked there.
Oh, no. This one is like going to, to, Dr. Phillips, you get off the I-4 there?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm a different one.
Yeah, at, at that tow booth. And I don't know if that was, you know, if we have some land someplace, we can provide a place and charge a fee or?
If, if the city authorized it, it would probably have to be a, an authorized city parking lot. And in terms of where it is, you know, a lot of, a lot of the property owners, you know, they're, they're parking near where they live. And with the multiple, I mean, I've seen, I have seen them out on the road and they, they park where, as close as they can to where they live. So if we, if we did find a, a lot or something that, that they were parking in, it would probably have to be an industrial area because you park them in a, in a residential area, then we got complaints because they're-
Oh, no. We're talking about, you know, resi, in industrial areas, out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah.
I understand what Commissioner Smith's look, I mean, there are these, these trucks that need to, they, they come home for the weekend and then they want to go back, but they can't park it in their front yard and they can't park it down the street. Is there, I, I don't know the-
Well, some of them come, bring them home every day.
There would, there would have to be some type of private transaction between the, the truck owner and the owner of a business or location that has parking. As long as that vehicle is allowed to park there pursuant to the Land Development Code, then it becomes just a private transaction between the driver and, and the property owner.
Commissioner, I do know that kind of in Zellwood, in the Zellwood area, there's a truck stop. If you're headed north on 441, to the right, there's kind of a truck stop there that has a lot of, some open space, it seems like, all the time. Maybe we could put them in touch with, with, with those people and maybe there's a way they can do some kind of a, you know, park their truck there over the night or over the weekend. But I know there's some spaces in there that is actually kind of a truck stop area. But I don't, I mean, that's the only one I can think of currently that's local.
But we wouldn't have anything closer.
Not that I, that I'm aware of that's closer.
What's the, the industrial park there on Apopka Court, John's Road, you know what we're talking about? Before you get to the hospital? Before you go to underpass?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, we actually, we were annexing some property in there for development. That's a Cendroni property that's, that, that came up. But that's, yeah, it's on the right-hand side and, but that'll, that'll end up getting developed, but it, it's, it's kind of a precarious pathway to actually get in. But they would end up having to have probably paved, paved parking in order to be able to do that.
Right.
And I don't know anybody that's going to, you know, pay half a million dollars to pave a parking lot for trucks.
Okay.
That's, that's the hard part.
Yeah.
What's that?
Trader Maze.
Trader Maze on Rock Springs Road used to have truck parking back there. I don't know if they still do or not, but Mr. is right, it's a logistics issue. It's not, it's a convenience issue. They don't want to go from Trader Maze to their homes on Martin Road because it's a long distance. It's easier to park on the right-way on Martin Road.
All right. This is about.
Yeah. All right. Anything else, Commissioner Smith? Good? Okay. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back on the public meeting, the pre-application community meeting. Because I know Michael had referenced our land development code. So I'm looking at it right now. So section 2 dot 4 dot 2 drives our pre-application community meeting. And whereas I agree that B1, a comp plan or land use change is not a required pre-application meeting, bullet D on there just does give the power of the latitude for our director to require it. And even so, they voluntarily offered it up under section C. It says if a pre-application community meeting is conducted, doesn't say whether required or voluntary, it shall comply with the following requirements, which C3 says, the meeting shall be open to the public.
Correct. Yeah, that's-
So I can't, I can't instruct, I, I don't, I don't know that our land development code gives us the power as council to instruct you, the director, to, and, to do this, but I think it would be best for all parties if we did.
Right. And that, that's what I was trying to, I was trying to thread that, kind of thread that needle in avoiding that it appear that the council was directing the applicant to have the meeting with the community. As said, I said it was, there was no problem if you suggested or recommended, but if the applicant elects not to have the meeting because he said, he might say hypothetically, or any applicant might say, I've already had the meeting, there's no authority under the land developing code for the council to say, no, no, you will have the meeting. Unless you suggest to the director, because the director has that discretion, the director may, may-
And that's what I'm getting at. So I'm, I'm politely nudging Jim as the director out in our land development code to say, hey, Jim, I think that they didn't have this meeting open and readily available for the public. You have in your powers under B1D to force them to have a follow-up meeting. That's who I'm asking for.
I second that nudge.
Yeah, I, I already, I already called it up also and, and I already talked to Michael in regards to that. And that's what I had referred to, is that I'll talk with the, with the applicant in regards to setting up another meeting. Considering that not everybody was able to get it signed in, but I also wanted to make sure that I, I mentioned under a public form that, that they need to click that switch to allow everybody to come in without having to be asked to come, or allowed to come in. So we'll, we'll take care of that. And more than likely, there'll probably be somebody that just won't be able to know how, how to do Zoom, but at least we're, we're definitely making that effort. And I think that'll, that'll become very, very apparent for us.
Cool. All right. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Becker? Okay.
I'll just mention, I do have a son who's getting married this Saturday, so we've been rather-
Congratulations.
-occupied with plans.
Edward?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I just have three items. The first item I want to talk about, if you recall back in December of 18, we had some two surplus police vehicles that we took off of our list because they were kind of on their last, their useful life for us here in the city. But we had a request from the City of Springfield in the Panhandle, if you remember during Michael, Hurricane Michael, that they had some use for it, or they could use them. So we, if you remember, we had an agreement that we would donate those vehicles to them, take them off of our asset, donate them back. There was a requirement that they let us know when they were done with them so that we had the option to know when they were, what they were going to do with them if we wanted them back. The chief and I have talked about it, we don't want them back. They're on their last legs. They don't even want them. So what I understand, one of them, I think, is completely like gone, not, not usable at all. So anyway, this is just an informational item, I want to bring it back to you, let you know that, per that agreement or whatever, those vehicles will be disposed of. The, the City of Springfield will dispose of those vehicles, but wanted to let you know that per that agreement.
And we had mentioned before, we had tried to work out something for a courtesy car for our local airport, which many small airports will have that for pilots come in. And I knew there was legal concerns, liability concerns. Again, if this is on its last legs, I don't think it'd be much of a courtesy.
No, this one was, we couldn't even get it back. We can't even get it back here to use it for courtesy. But we-
But if there's some type of option for that.
But when we have vehicles like that, we do. Absolutely. Those are ones that, that's why I wanted, we wanted to, we wanted that option to be able to have, bring these back home if there was something we wanted to, to use them for. But chief has, hadn't been in contact with them and we don't want them. As per chief, he says, you know, they're, they're done. You don't, it's not worth bringing those back. But-
And for those who don't know what that is, courtesy vehicle, basically, many airports will have that if a pilot comes in to visit the area, to be able to make just little local jaunts. And it's, it's pretty customary for that, so it'd be a great thing if we could do that.
Then my next item is, if you recall back in the summer, this year, in the summer, this past summer, we, you approved an agreement with a company, a claims management company, alternative claims management company. And they were, would go after loss of use when we've had, when we've been involved in an accident, they would go after loss of use and any other property damages or whatever funding that was still available from the insurance companies. Well, I'm kind of proud to say today that we will, we've, we're at about $17,000 with that. So they've gone back, they have a list of 27 claims, prior claims over the last couple of years that they're going back on because there's some additional funding there. When we have a vehicle that's been hit and it's been out of use, there's some funding that can come back for, to us from those insurance companies. So that company is, wanted to let you know that there's a, that's a positive note. So, and now I turn to the financial update. As we start a new year, we'll continue this. Like I told you, I think it's important that we monitor this each month. You can see this is our sales tax, we have our October number. Right out of the chute, we're down 28% from the prior year for that month. Keep in mind that Jan, October was a good month last year. So we'll continue to monitor this as we move through each month. October, we didn't, it was March before we, in April before we had the hit. But I think it's important that we continue to monitor these revenues. And I wanted to, what we'll do is we'll continue to monitor from prior year to this year each month, so you have that. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is, you can see our budget was a budgeted right at a little bit over $10 million in sales tax for the new FY '21 fiscal year. And currently to date, we're already $196,000 short of that estimate. So I just want you to, we'll keep this in mind, we'll continue to monitor it, bring it to you and see how we move through the year, month by month. I think it's important that we continue to watch this number based on all of the factors that are out there between some things we've, we've heard in the economy with Disney, laying off some more people and with the COVID numbers, whatever. I think it's important that we just at least mon, monitor it each month so we know where we are. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, I'd like to say one more thing real quick. And Jamie just sent this to me. There is some CARES Act funding that's still available from Orange County. We've had it on our Facebook, the county's had it out there. There's still from around, looks like about 4,000 available spots to be applied for, and it's funding that can help with rental, rental assistance, utility bills. So I just want to kind of put that out there, that there's still some time. They had 15,000 this morning and they're, they've used 11, they've got 11,000, so there's about 4,000 left that can apply. And that allows each homeowner to get about $1,000 and they can use it for, for assistance. And, and water bills is one of those, so I wanted to put that out there.
That's going to be my question, was water bills included?
They, we can't get it, but there's the, the homeowner can get, the resident can apply for the money and then they can use that money to assist them with multiple things and utility, water bill is one of them.
And that's under the Orange County?
Yes, on the CARES Act under Orange County's website. It's on our Facebook as well.
Okay.
The link. That's all.
Bye. Michael?
All right. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the purported organization of the firefighters, kind of, kind of mirroring and following the current process with the Police Department. We received, were, we received word from our Labor Council, who was contacted by the council for the IAFF, the International Association of Firefighters, requesting whether the city would like to consider doing a voluntary recognition, which means that the city would just recognize them as the bargaining unit and they would be certified as a union without there being a vote of the membership. And I then, I consulted with Chief Wyllam and which, and as well as our Labor Council, who stated that such a, it's rare for cities to do these voluntary recognitions. Mainly the, the chief concern is that it disenfranchises the employees who, those employee, those firefighters never get a choice to vote yea or nay on organizing. It's just automatically done and the state will automatically certify it. So we, I did reach out to council for the IAFF and told them that the city will not voluntarily recognize and that we will proceed forward and undertake the same procedures and methods that we're doing with the Police Department. And we'll work together with the Florida PERC to do so. So that's the current status. My communications with the council were last week and we have not been served yet with any paperwork from PERC, which is the Public Employees Relations Commission of the State of Florida, beginning that process for organization for the firefighters. So at the present time, we have nothing, we're not, that, to, that I'm aware, because you know, we have not been served, neither myself nor Chief Wyllam have been served yet with any of the paperwork from PERC. So at, at this point, it's, we're in extremely preliminary stages. Any, if you have any questions, I'm free to answer.
Any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. Okay. Next up, a couple of things. COVID-19 updates, your maps and, and numbers are in your packet. They're starting to climb again, so just need to be very careful. We, as you saw, the, the contract we had scheduled for, for December got canceled because the numbers were climbing, not just here, but, but, you know, across the southeast. So hopefully we get that one rescheduled for January.
And I, I don't know, you probably don't know because they're, they're not reporting it here, but my understanding is that fatalities are decreasing by percentage, which is a good thing.
Yes.
And pointing in a positive direction. And the other thing is, the statistic that we never get is recoveries. I know some states, they, they list that as well, which is-
Yeah. All, all I'm getting, the numbers they're, they're giving me, so. Next up, legislative priorities. Just, we're trying to get a feel for where y'all want to kind of land. I think it's going to be a lean year this year, so anybody have suggestions, what, some of the things you'd like to focus on, like to go in and at least get that kind of, so we start to put together a plan, you know, we got to find bill sponsors and-
Yeah. My, my only reservation on the, on the Quest Camp Thunderbird one is that I just don't know organizationally if they're going to be set up to accommodate that. So, you know, if, if we went forward with that one, I would just strike Quest Camp Thunderbird and just do inclusive playground. But again, I think with all three of, of the playground thing, the Harmon Road, the Fire Station 6, are we putting anything on paper about how much we're kind of putting forth? Because, you know, with it being such a lean year, they're going to probably look at us to say, hey, what are you all putting in on it?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a part of that. We always, we, we do a 50% match and, and that, you know, we got, obviously we got Harmon Road and the Fire Station 6, all the way to the governor and then was line item vetoed out. So those two, we've gotten all the way through, but these are just the other ones that we've, we've, you know, tried to, to work on. So I just didn't know, one of the things I'd really like to, because there might be some additional, additional pots of money, is I really want to look at the Border Lake fix. I mean, it's a big number, but I, and I think we've got a lot of partners, if we all kind of go to Tallahassee together, I think we've got a much better shot at pulling that one off.
I would put that as number one.
I think that's one we've got to, we've got to, you know, address that. Because if we get another, you know, tough year, I think, you know, I've got some pretty good friends that, you know, could help me with Fire Station 6. We wanted to try that. And then I know Harmon Road, we, you know, obviously Advent Health has been, was a great partner in helping us get it through to the, the governor. I just, I just got to get, you know, it's, one of the problems with the Harmon Road one is it's not on the five-year work plan. So one of the things we got to work, Pam and I were trying to work on is getting it on the five-year work plan, then it becomes a lot more palatable for the governor to not line item veto it out. But, so maybe three, three requests, maybe, if you got three that you'd like to, for us to kind of really focus on? Okay.
Three of those, well, I, I think the Lake Cortez and definitely the Fire Station and Harmon Road since they've already made it.
Okay.
Maybe they'll get through this time.
Okay.
But definitely the Lake Cortez and Border Lake.
Okay. All right. Okay. So those three, is everybody good with that?[1738.03] Okay. All right. Last but not least, I always like to end on a high note here. We've got Victoria Parks, our new deputy city clerks here with us today. Yes, I want to read her, her bio, just started Monday. Victoria Parks, 29-year-old, was born and raised in Eustis, Florida. Her fiance and, and her have five children, three girls and two boys. She graduated from Eustis High School, went to Lake Sumter State College, where she received a full volleyball scholarship, and received an AA degree in criminal justice. From then, she went on to Virginia Union, Virginia Union University in Richmond, but transferred to the University of Central Florida, "Go Knights," as she puts down here, and received her Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice and a certificate in criminal profiling. So in our first meeting, she was looking at me kind of strange, and I was like, "What are you, what are you looking at?" And she was trying to profile me, and I had to, I had to walk away.
Did you pass?
I, I don't know, she hadn't told me yet. While at school at UCF, she began working for the City of Leesburg Recreation Department as their office specialist. After 17 months, she was accepted into full-time law program at Florida Coastal, but after one year decided that was not what she wanted to do. So went back to the City of Leesburg Customer Service, and after 19 months as a customer service specialist, was promoted to deputy city clerk, where she'd worked for two years and 11 months before we stole her. So with that, Victoria, thanks for coming on board, okay? And last but certainly not least, we've got an excellent award the City of Apopka would like to present to Sergeant, Sergeant Daniel Garcia for his commission as an Ensign in the U.S. Coast Guard. Come on up, Dan. Yes. Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate it. All right. With that, close the public meeting.